I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, December 1st. Denise, may we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Sampson?
Here.
Representative Potem Olson?
Here.
And Mayor Marshall?
Here. First item is closed session, and if I may defer to the city attorney, Scott Campbell.
Yes, we're going in a closed session for two items. We have public employee discipline dismissal release, as well as conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation. This is one matter. This is regarding discussion options for counsel to consider on one of the disciplinary matters. Any further information, we believe would... may constitute a violation of privacy of the individuals involved. During these closed sessions, as well as the open session, the counsel will be advised by Mike Mayroff from Leibert, Cassidy, and Fryerson. Mark's over there. And so, we'll go into closed session.
So as to the closed session...
Oh, not quite.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He says wait a minute. And we're on. Go ahead.
Thank you. As to the closed session items, number one and two, the council has met in closed session, and there was no reportable action taken as to those two items.
Okay, and now we will go to general business.
This general business is the consideration of whether the city council should hear the appeal of termination brought by Amanda Cook.
And my name is Mark Mayroff. I'm an outside counsel from Leibert, Cassidy, Whitmore that is brought in to advise the council on this particular matter. And the form of the appeal as to this disciplinary action can take three forms, and the council will deliberate as to which form it can take. Under the city rules, the council can hear the appeal as a body, which means they hear all the evidence, the examinations, cross-examinations, review all the evidence, and then make a determination based upon the evidence and the testimony taken. The council can also appoint a committee of this council, which would be one or two members, to do the same thing, to hear the evidence, hear the testimony, and make a recommendation back to the full council for a final decision. Or the third option would be for the council to appoint a third-party hearing officer to hear the evidence and make a recommendation in writing back to the council, again, for the council's final decision. If the council decides to have a committee or a hearing officer listen to all the evidence, again, the council will have the final say as to the appropriate level of discipline, if any, and will then make a final decision based on the recommendation from the committee or from the third-party hearing officer. The council has been advised already that if they do hear this decision themselves, that that means that they have not made any predeterminations or made any statements that indicate any predetermination as to this matter prior to hearing it. So the council will now deliberate in open session as to which form of the hearing that they want to choose for this disciplinary action.
Okay, counsel, comments? Yep, we're deliberating quietly. And at some point, do I ask the public if they would like to speak on this? Can someone approach the bench?
They have the right to make a comment if they want to.
Okay, if anybody...okay, perfect.
I'll jump in. I actually like the third choice, having the outside mediator come in and hear the evidence and report back to the council. I think it keeps an unbiased person in the loop, and I think we need to have an unbiased person in the loop. And I'm not sure that all of us are totally unbiased who hear this because it's a small town and we know all the players. And I think you do bring in an outside person, and we'll get to the end of it the appropriate way.
And Mark, could you please tell us, in something like this and what you know, how many...how long something like this might take? If we chose to take it on as a council, how many...what we are looking at in terms of time?
Sure. If the council decided to hear this as a body, it's an estimate only because it's impossible to forecast how long it might take once all the evidence is brought up. But I would estimate between one to three nights it would take for the evidence and the testimony and the witnesses.
Okay, and the number of hours per day, you're not quite sure?
Or days, right?
Or days.
Yeah, the council can determine how many hours they want to hear it. Obviously, the more hours, the less nights it would take. But usually, it would be a four to six-hour hearing per night.
And if we did decide to go with a third-party administrator, so to speak, would it be public? Or, I mean, would we participate on any level? Would we be here? Would we watch? What's our participation at that point?
If it went to a third-party, then if the employee chose to have it done in open session, it still would be private because the legislative body would not be hearing the appeal. So the testimony in front of the hearing officer would be just in front of the hearing officer and any concerned parties. Then, again, the recommendation would come back to the city council for deliberation in closed session, and then you can report out your determination once you've made it.
So essentially, the hearing itself would be private?
I've had situations where the parties have agreed to have that hearing be in public. That's more unusual, though. Usually, the hearing itself is done in private. If the employee wanted it done in public, meaning that members of the public can attend, it wouldn't be usually done during a council meeting, because it's usually done during the day. That does happen occasionally, but usually, it's done in private.
And actually, because the employee in this case has indicated that they want the appeal in open session, the deliberations would be in open session?
Oh, I apologize. Yeah, if the employee indicated that's how they want that done, then deliberations would be in open session. So you would be reviewing the recommendation and then discussing it in open session.
So the third party that's involved would eventually, when they come to their conclusion, if we went in that direction, that would come back around to the city council to either approve it or what else? We could just prove it as it is, or is there another...
You can approve it as is. You can reject it. For example, the hearing officer can recommend upholding the discipline. You can accept that. You can reject that. Or you can modify the discipline downwards. Same thing if the hearing officer recommended no discipline. You can reject that and impose the discipline, accept the hearing officer's decision, or impose some level of discipline short of termination.
And then you said we would only be privileged to the information that came out during the hearing?
Right, that you can see the documents, see the testimony, and the hearing officer's report on what the hearing officer's recommendation was.
Okay, and then that would take an estimated several days for that, for a hearing officer to hear that?
Again, it's hard to estimate. I would estimate between one to three days for a hearing officer to hear the evidence. It would take some time also after and after the hearing officer to write a recommendation for the council. It could be several weeks. It could be several months, depending on the hearing officer.
So the hearing officer...what do they get...what are they going to charge? What's their fee for their services? I mean, so it takes several days? What do they charge?
Depending on the hearing officer, it could be anywhere from approximately $300 to $500 an hour.
Okay, if it takes them three days, then if a council heard it, do you think it would take longer?
It usually takes a slightly longer for a council as a body to hear it, just because it's a shorter amount of hours the council usually spends at a hearing, and also the lack of experience doing a hearing.
Absolutely.
Well, we've heard from Mayor Potem Olson. This is a delicate issue, and being in a small town, it is...it is...it's a tough issue for us. I'm in concurrence with Mayor Potem Olson, not having the experience, and everything. I would rather take the advice and go with a third-party myself.
And again, we're...this comes back to us with all the information that I've...
Yes, yes.
I just...it's a delicate situation. I just don't want it to appear that we're running from this thing as a council, let somebody else do. We're just sort of listening to the open session that she's entitled to. I just don't want it to make it look like we're trying to hide behind something, that we're not doing our job. We have an obligation to fill. I know it might be long time, long hours, or what we could do. I just really like us to really look deep into this and make it look like we're not running from this thing and hiding behind something. We have an obligation to fulfill if she wants an open session and meet with us. That's just my feeling on it.
I certainly agree with all comments on the DA so far. I see both...Richard, I appreciate what you just said very much. I really want to hear this, but I also think in the best interest of the employee and the best interest in doing the right thing would be to have an independent person hear through the whole process. We have received so much mail. There's been a lot happening over the last six months. I think issues are convoluted, and I just really feel that an independent third-party would be justice served for both the employee and for the situation. So I would...my vote would be to go ahead and move forward with having an independent third-party hear the case.
Yes, there is one. Oh, does anybody want to speak?
Amanda Cook, I'm the employee in question. I'm a little concerned that we're talking about dragging this out for another three or four months. I received my first threat of termination from Ben Harvey on May 15th. So my family's been suffering with this for a while. You've already paid an attorney to talk to Michael Demars, Devin Thompson, Ben Harvey, and Mike Flynn, and me. Are all of those people now going to come back and have to talk all over again to someone else? All of that testimony is in written format. I have a copy of it, and I assume that you would get a copy of it. You would get a copy of all the relevant documents, the staff reports, the plans, all the documents that the investigating attorney looked at and made their recommendation from. It seems like you would get those same documents. So it seems double churning this, to now have somebody else come in and have to go through all this all over again, have a third-party come in who doesn't understand what's going on. One of the issues in the whole thing was whether or not planning approvals were conceptual. Planning approvals are not conceptual. When you get approval to build a hundred-square-foot house, you have to build a hundred-square-foot house. You can't build a 200-square-foot house. But yet, Ben Harvey, Michael Demars, the investigating attorney, Claude Anthony, the architect, all talked about it being conceptual plans. So I feel like I want my chance to stand here at this podium in front of this community that I have served for 21 years and finally have a chance to tell my side of the story. This has been a fabricated witch hunt for six months that I have had to deal with, and I just won't...I don't...I've reached a point where I don't care what you do. I would love to have my job back. I love my job, but I just want a chance to tell my side of the story to you, to the people I used to work with, and to the town that I have served for 21 years. So you want to hire an outside mediator, and then I can go talk to them, and they'll talk to everybody, and we'll drag this out another four or five months. But the longer this is dragged out, there's more pain and suffering and damage to me and my family, the longer you drag this out. And I think I deserve a shorter, faster, more streamlined process than this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, can I ask you a question? But that was what I was saying before, is even if we heard it, we would be hearing all the testimony and whatnot again as well. But would it be...would Amanda have the ability to speak her mind and tell her side of the story publicly?
Well, I imagine she would testify as a witness in any such hearing, whatever body hears it. Following the hearing itself, the council could hear from oral argument from the parties if it wished to, so that is an option the council has.
Okay.
Good evening, counsel, persons, and mayor. I'm excited to learn that this issue is about the museum. I was told that there was absolutely no founded reason by someone who worked at the city for Amanda's cancellation, or her employment cancellation. It's neat to talk that it's about the museum. I've written you all about the museum and how Mike Demars had misled me about that particular building and its sidewalk and staircase, et cetera. So I'm going to be very involved with this. I'm perplexed why. You're the city council. Hear the facts, make a decision. When Mark talks about this being $500 an hour, or eight hours a day, or $4,000, or three days, or $12,000, come on, you don't need to do that. Just hear the facts, and they are what they are. And if she was dismissed improperly, re-engage her and admit that there was a mistake made. Ben Harvey made a bunch of mistakes to a bunch of people. We all know that. So let's give Amanda what she deserves, and if she wants a public hearing, don't you think that she deserves a public hearing? I don't know why the newspaper isn't here covering it, because this is something that everybody should be able to read about. The town is so filled with rumors about her being locked out of her office, that it boggled her, it boggled everybody, it boggled some other staff members, and everybody in the community wants to know what's going on. So it doesn't make any sense to hide it or subcontract it out to somewhere else, and now we've got other crises that we're going through next summer. Let's get on with it and give her what she wants. She deserves it, and I think that she's worthy of it. And she's served us well. 21 years is a hell of a long time to be on someone's docket, and I would think that out of respect, you should be able to give her what she wants. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, you may have missed the two times prior in the last 10 minutes or so that I've asked the question, would she still get the opportunity to have this public? And the answer is yes.
My question is, then, if it is public, is there a chance for public comment? Or is this just a trial where we're observers and we can't give other information? Because I know as far as the museum project goes, I've got a lot of input and experience direct, personal, that I think would apply also. So I might be a great witness if need be. Thank you.
During the hearing, the hearing officer would not take public comment. During deliberations of this body, you could take public comment, because it would be an open session.
Hi, Yolanda Montano, 20 Canyon Terrace.
Speak up, please.
Hi, Yolanda Montano, 20 Canyon Terrace. We just heard from Amanda, and she's been with the city for 21 years, and I feel that you owe it to her to give her a speedy trial. I mean, I think what her point was is she can't afford, you know, another day to go by. It's going to go through a third-party and then come back to you. I mean, that's time, and, you know, it's the holidays. She's been with you for 21 years. You know, with what happened with the city manager, I'm very disappointed, because I hear some council members very upset and almost like a death had occurred, and, you know, all these, you know, very...that the city's not going to be able to move forward. But I haven't heard once how sad and how upset any of you were when she was let go. Nothing, you know? I mean, you really need to let Amanda have a speedy trial. I mean, she's not getting paid anymore. She's terminated. At least when, you know, she was let go administratively, she was actually getting paid, but not anymore. And if that's her wish, and she's going to take that chance, that it could go not in her favor, and she just said it on record, she doesn't care. So let's just give her her wish, and let's get this done and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. May I ask a procedural question? So prior to my termination, the city hired an attorney to investigate, and that attorney interviewed all these people and reviewed all the documents and created a package of information that that person, that attorney presented to the city manager, and based on that information, the city manager made his decision. It sounds to me like if we're going to go to an outside mediator, that now there's going to be a whole new body of evidence and information assimilated for you to review to consider whether or not to change or adhere the termination. That almost doesn't seem right. It almost seems like you should be reviewing the same packet of information that the city manager based his decision on, because then you would be judging...you wouldn't be making judgment based on the same information. The idea of having to bring all these people in to bear witness again and spend all the money to have somebody else...in spite of all the effect on me, it breaks my heart what this process has cost the taxpayer. And so, it just seems like it'd be most fair for you to just read through that little packet of information that Mr. Harvey reviewed, the testimonies from the relevant people, including me, and the relevant information, and make your decision based on that. For my part, I don't see trailing six or eight people in here to bear witness. I was just going to stand here and tell my side of the story. So that's all.
That's a great point, and I appreciate that clarification. Mark, can you speak to that? We wouldn't...so maybe I was incorrect in my comment earlier. We wouldn't be hearing testimony over again from all the participations. We would...we...or whoever would receive what's already been testified to? Is that correct?
Well, it's up to each side to determine how to present the evidence to...hypothetically, if the council heard it, it's up to each side to determine how to present the evidence. Due process principles do require an opportunity for a full evidentiary hearing, which requires to satisfy due process, that each side have the ability to examine and cross-examine witnesses. So that is the due process principle, and not allowing that could be a violation of due process, absent some type of waiver. But it would be up to each side to determine how to present their evidence, whether they wanted to just rely upon what's in the investigation, or whether they wanted to have those individuals testify in front of whoever hears it, so that credibility determinations could be made, demeanor can be assessed, that type of thing.
And I probably am missing a little bit of what Amanda's saying, but if she says, "Do away with due process, we all five get the packets, we read the packets, and then we go in closed session and we deliberate," that process isn't possible, where it's just we read the stuff, and then we make a decision, and then we give a determination? It can't be that simple?
It would require some clear waiver of due process rights by the appellant.
I think since one of my issues has been lack of due process, I'm not...I don't want to short-change the process. I guess because I've never done an appeal hearing before, it's kind of new ground for me. I didn't anticipate that there would be, like, you know, a Perry Mason trial where we would all be cross-examining...I didn't envision cross-examining Michael Demars up here in a chair. So my goal was just to be able to present...I felt like everyone had had their side of the story except me. I wasn't asked, before I was put on leave, what had happened. I didn't know for five weeks why I was out on pay leave. So it just...I've just...the main thing I want is just an opportunity to stand here and tell my side of the story. I would hope that it could be a very short process and not incur any more expenses than absolutely necessary to get this issue resolved.
Thank you.
And then as far as timeframe, regardless of which direction we went, what is a timeframe in moving forward with the actual hearing?
If the council hears it, it would be up to the council's calendar and any attorneys who are involved in presenting the case. If a hearing officer is involved, it would probably be a bit of a longer timeframe, because it then involves the hearing officer's availability.
Can you...I'm sorry, can you qualify what a bit of a time would be? I hate to put you on the spot, but are we talking months, or are we talking...
If it's a hearing officer, usually their availability is...would be a couple of months at the minimum as to when they...any common hearing officer would be available. Could be shorter, but most hearing officers are booked for at least two to three months in advance.
From the city's view on this, we would understand council's direction. If you wanted this to be done, that we could limit ourselves to hearing officers that were available, you know, very quickly. That, you know, you may...you're narrowing the people, but we would commit...that we would work with Ms. Cook in getting a hearing officer that was available as quick as possible.
And if we wanted to hear it ourselves, under either circumstance, Amanda probably should have an attorney present, and we should have one just to follow process without getting crazy, or not crazy, but...
Well, okay, the way it will work is from the city's point of view, we will have someone from the city attorney's office presenting the evidence. Amanda could present herself, or she could have someone help her, and then Mark would be advising the council during that. Like, if you had a question about evidence or whatever, he would be giving you advice.
Would this be a live public forum?
If the council heard it, it would be done in open session.
It'd be an open session?
Yes.
So people would...the witnesses would show up? We'd be able to hear from everybody that's listed on whatever the paperwork is out there?
Correct. The witnesses would be excluded from the...from being present when other witnesses are there, with the exception of Ms. Cook. But, you know, you wouldn't have, like, 10 witnesses sitting there. We'd excuse the witnesses to make certain that each witness is testifying based upon their own recollection, their own view, not hearing what everyone else says and coloring their testimony.
And you subpoena them and all that to get her and all of that?
Yep.
It's not like just come to the six o'clock meeting.
How many sessions are we talking about?
Well, he said maybe three.
It could be anywhere from one to three. It's hard to estimate without...until we get started.
What we will...what we would do from the city's point of view is we would work with Ms. Cook or her representative in getting a stipulated...you know, usually what you go in and you have a set of stipulated facts, where, you know, parties agree that here are certain facts where we don't need additional testimony. And so, again, the city is, you know, we would be working with Ms. Cook in getting a set of stipulated facts that are presented to the council or to the third-party.
Good evening, Judge J. Pointe, sir. Private citizen. Just want to clarify that up front.
Look at your hat, J.J.
I can't help it, I've got to show up here. You know, sitting here listening to this and I keep thinking back on 31 years with the city, nine city managers, five harbor masters, and a slew of mayors. I have never seen something like this transpire in that time period. And I don't think there's anybody up here at the council can sit back and say, "Yes, this happened before." The city has a huge issue with their progressive discipline policy that is non-existent within the policy rules and regulations. You have a city manager who exuded his authority and basically said, "It's my way or the highway" and escorted her out of the thing for whatever reason. "I don't have the information that people have." I don't know. The bottom line is she deserves her right to stand in front of five of you who we voted to put you there. And I really appreciate your conversation, your comments regarding about running and hiding. You know what? You guys had a tough decision to make, you made the decision, but we voted to put you there. And every employee is sitting back watching how this is transpiring. And you have attorneys upon attorneys costing her an arm and a leg for her attorneys, time spent. I've been in a disciplinary issue through a Christmas time, and I think we've talked about that with good old Bud Smith. And it's not, it's not right, it's not fun. It's one of those things that should never happen. And all she's asking is to stand before you five people and give you her side of the story. That's all. This has gotten so blown so far out of proportion, you know, she shouldn't have to give up her due process or her rights. All she wants to do is say, "Listen, the city manager said I did this and I disagree with him and here's what I did," and put it out on the table. Then you guys collectively, let her know how you feel. You don't have to let her know right then and there if, I think, am I correct? Once the information is given, they have time to go back and deliberate it. They don't have to give an answer right there on the spot. Is that correct? Okay, so I think we're building this thing up way out of proportion. It's already gone mega here because this young lady has been out of work. Granted, she still got paid, but she still was escorted in front of all of her employees and her friends and everybody else out of the building. Turned her keys in for, I'm not arguing the points, I'm just saying this happened to her. And in a small town, I'm sorry, that's disgusting, absolutely disgusting, when you start to worry about how, you know, oh, you get an argument with an employee, they got to separate you, you know, separate you out, you got to move you away, you got to do this. You know what? There's a little bit of self-respect involved here. And I think each one of you, all five of you, need to bear the responsibility to listen to what she has to say. Not a third party, a third party is not going to end up giving you the passion and giving you the information that she can articulate. You have attorneys that already have gone through everybody. Give her the opportunity. Give her the opportunity and then stand by your decision. You know what? If it's not enough, it's not good enough, then, you know, vote your heart. But stand by, that's why we voted on you guys. That's why we put you there. Stand by your decision, stand by her due process. Let her sit in open forum and explain, the charges will be read back to her of what she committed. Let her explain it. You guys owe the city employees and the city constituents that much. Don't get a third party, don't be running behind something. And again, your statement is, just hit the nail right on the head. And I got to tell you, I'm a little passionate about this, but I'm a firm believer that, you know, if we went through our due process and the city manager said, "I'm going to fire you," there's one more step and that step is you guys. Not a third person, not that person interpreting what she says back to you. You have to hear it. You have to hear the passion involved. And that's important when you're arguing, when you're arguing these cases. That's important. So I mean, no disrespect by any means to anybody here and especially to Amanda, but we voted you here to hear it. That's what we did. And I think that we need to tighten our belts, suck it up, and listen to it and go from there and then make your decisions accordingly. So, thank you very much. Again, J.J. Poindexter, private citizen.
I mean, I'm hearing all this and feeling so, I just, I just don't know how to simplify it. So even if we decided we wanted to hear it, I mean, could we hear it? Again, that's the due process thing. If we had heard that she speaks, we read the material, and it's as simple as that? Is that, is that totally out of the realm of possibility?
Well, each side has to determine how to present their case. The city has the burden, so the city would present its case as it saw fit. The appellant can present her case as she sees fit. If you want a process where you just rule on the written materials, it would require some waiver of due process rights because the opportunity to cross-examine would not be there. The opportunity to present witnesses would not be there. So either side could present the evidence any way that they, that they want because the opportunity is there. But if you're determining that the opportunity shouldn't be there, then that would require a written waiver of rights.
So basically, it is, it is Mrs. Cook and ex-city manager Ben Harvey. Since he started the process, we read all of the witness stuff that's on there, in there. And is it basically that, the two of them that would be coming forward?
I couldn't, I can't project what evidence would be before you. If he chose a route where you weren't hearing testimony, I don't know what's in the packet. I don't know what you would be left with or what. It would be a very, it would be a very unorthodox way to do an appeal.
The one issue with the, the Guinness from the city's side is there was no cross-examine in the investigation. The investigation was listening to witnesses and taking statements and accepting the statements on their face value. There was not the opportunity in the investigation to then cross-examine the witnesses. And so we would preserve the right, her right and the city's right to cross-examine so that we, you know, you could present the evidence, which you will get, the whole packages, but the ability to question each other and question assumptions and ask questions. The investigation determined facts, presented it, but it was not a cross-examination of, you know, the various sides. And so we'd want to preserve that to make sure all the facts are out.
So a waiver would have to be, the city would also have to agree to that. And again, the city has the ability, because they have the burden of proof to determine how to present their evidence. And if they believe that it was better to present the evidence through live testimony, then they have that right to present it that way. So I'm not, I'm not aware of a, of a form of a hearing where you would just look at the written evidence without both parties consenting to it and waiving that right.
A question, and I don't know if you can tell me whether or not Mr. Harvey would be acting as a witness?
It's up to the city to determine how to present their case, who to call as witnesses, what documents to submit.
So that's a decision that would be made behind closed doors as to what witnesses they wanted to call?
It's up to the city, just as it's up to you to determine who to present.
I think that was a yes or no question. That was a decision they would make behind, you're not going to make it no, you're not going to select witnesses out here, you're going to formulate your strategy. Someone's going to formulate strategy behind closed doors.
It's up to both sides to determine how to present their case. That's what due process allows.
And the council's role is not to direct how the evidence is presented, it's to receive the evidence.
Okay, so who decides how the evidence is presented?
It would be the city manager and the city attorney assigned, the interim city manager and the city attorney assigned to present the evidence.
Okay, okay. Second question, is there a middle ground between just looking at the evidence that's already been collected that's in printed form, the statements from the relevant parties, and automatically assuming that you're going to recall those individuals to, for cross-examination? I guess my question is, should the city council decide to review this themselves, would they have an opportunity to read the material and then decide whether or not they have additional questions? And I understand that it's up to them to decide how they want to present the evidence, but is that potentially a middle ground whereby you're reading the material before and then you're saying, "Yes, I have some questions for this individual, that individual, this individual," then you kind of have a better idea of how many. I don't have anyone I'm going to call other than me. I'm happy to tell you that right now. So it, it's mind-boggling to think this might take three or four days to get through this. That's just mind-boggling to me. Three or four hours for three or four days. I was fully expecting to be able to give my side of the story in about 45 minutes because all the other facts are already there in writing. So...
So you, none of your information is in the packet?
My only information that I have provided so far was in my response to the proposed termination, which I think is a several-page document.
You didn't have the ability, oh, so whatever the allegations were, you did, you were able to respond to those?
Yes.
Okay.
I was able to respond, yes, to Mr. Harvey's position and I was able to review the same packet of information that he had.
That he had, okay.
So I don't know if it's, again, I understand that it's the city's strategy to decide how they want to present their case, but it seems like it might narrow it down the timeframe if, once you reviewed the packet of information and see if there were additional questions or concerns. I don't, I don't know, anyway.
Can you, can you speak to that, Mark?
Well, again, it would still be up to the city to determine how to present its case. The council would usually review the, if the council heard it, the council would usually be reviewing the evidence as it's introduced to the council and then at the end of the hearing, the council can review all the evidence that was submitted to it. But some interim where you review the evidence beforehand and then determine if you want to ask questions. Again, it's the city's, it's the city's burden of proof, so they have the right to present their case as they see fit and that's almost always done through presenting evidentiary, presenting evidence through witnesses and documents and allowing both sides the chance to cross-examine each other's witnesses.
But I guess the confusing part to me now is because everything was done by the city manager at the time and now he's not here, so...
Let me, no, from the city's, again, this is the city's view, so I'm putting on my city hat.
Right.
The investigation was done by a third party.
Right.
Okay, the investigator interviewed Ms. Cook, people from the museum, Mr. Flynn, there was some other evidence presented from some planning experts. And that then decision, that, 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 that packet was provided to the city manager and based upon that information, the city manager made a determination as to the appropriate level of discipline. I don't believe the city manager was interviewed as part of that disciplinary proceeding because it was, it was, he made the decision based upon the finding of the investigator and that decision was determined.
Well, that makes it almost cleaner because his, because...
And again, so then in the council's role in this will be to determine whether the decision by the city manager was appropriate and supported by the investigation.
That simplifies it kind of to me.
Great. So Yolanda Montano, 20 Canyon Terrace. So this whole process started, what was the timeframe after Amanda filed her grievance on Ben Harvey? Did her, lead up to her termination and her dismissal of unadministrative leave?
Well, again, this, this open session is to discuss the form of the hearing. I don't know.
Well, I'm trying to, what I'm trying to establish here is, well...
There was an investigation into that particular allegation and Ms. Cook has been apprised of the outcome of that investigation.
Okay, no, but I'm just trying to, a timeframe here on how this all transpired and how long it took the investigators to investigate the allegations against Amanda Cook and within her termination. I just want to know the timeframe.
Both took months.
Months, okay, thank you.
So up to this point, the city council has been as expedient as we possibly can, right? I mean, because everything up to this point was out of our hands pretty much.
Correct.
Correct? So we aren't stalling on anything and we're not trying to pass the buck and we're not trying to take the easy route in any way, shape, or form. We're trying to take the best route and the best decision for everybody protecting the city and protecting our employees as well. I'm tending to think that after everything I'm hearing tonight, I, the reason there is no, that there was no passion about this is because we aren't getting involved to that point, up to this point right now. We've only heard probably just generic dialogue that has been given to us on a sheet of paper. Of course, there's a lot to it. We want to make the right decision and do the right thing, so, I mean, after hearing everybody and what you would like to see, we still need to make the decision based, the best decision based on what would be best for the city, the outcome for Amanda as well, so. What I'm thinking is, since you guys are so passionate about it, it might not be a bad idea for us to hear it, but it's just something that I don't believe is going to take three days. It doesn't seem to me like three days is going to do it. I mean, there's so much, there's piles of information that we need to go through and I've, personally, I don't read that fast. I need someone to walk, walk me through some of these items to understand them fully. So my take on it is I wouldn't have a problem hearing this ourselves if this is what the community would like. We don't have any problem facing what's in front of us whatsoever. There's nobody on this dais up here that I believe has a problem. We all want to come down to make the right decision, come to the right conclusion on this, so. I would, personally, wouldn't be, have a problem at all hearing this, but I don't, I think it's, to say it's going to take three days to me is, that's, that's far-fetched. I don't think so. But if you guys, if you can organize this and make it right and, you know, make it clear, fair, and fluent, I think it's something that we need to do for you guys, for the community so that you know that we are behind you, we know that, so that you know that we are up here and we are representing the community in the best way we possibly can with the information that has been given to us, so. And we can't, and there's no way that we could come up with any kind of a predetermination on any of this. All of this stuff is something that all of us have had to stay very, very neutral on and it's been very private because that's what the law requires. I don't have a problem hearing this, absolutely not. At this point, after I... At this point, after, after hearing the public, that's fine.
Okay, and I have another question again, and I kind of, and I really don't now either, but I am concerned about the due process on both sides. If, if, again, because I think the information is, the assumption has to be that the information in that report is accurate. Whatever it says, it's accurate, they said it under oath, I imagine?
No.
No?
Just interview.
Just interview. So, so those could be lies, so how do we find out if they're even lies?
Hear say. But that, that's the purpose of the evidentiary hearing, is you swear people under oath. They have to raise their hand, they have to swear to tell the truth, and then we take evidence, and there's cross-examination. That's the purpose of the evidentiary hearing.
So you independently get to hear the testimony and make your own determination as to whether to believe it or not?
We're five judges.
Darn, that's complicated.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I find it ironic that a twenty-one-year employee was terminated based on the testimony given to this attorney, to Mr. Morris, and I sat through one of the interviews, he asked questions, he said, and, and yet somehow or another, there was no presumption that they were telling the truth, and my career's went out the window based on their statements that he reported and reported back to the city attorney. And now it seems kind of ironic that now you want to stand up and cross-examine them and make sure they were telling the truth. Well, why didn't you do that before you fired me? So, I, it just seemed, I understand that that's the process, and that's what the law says, is that you have a right to present witnesses, you have a right to cross-examine, that's part of the process, but it seems a little ironic that, that due process wasn't in, part of the process before you terminated somebody. Anyway, I-
And this is the first day we get to get involved, so we don't, we don't know how all of it's transpired in the past, and, I mean, I just, I want to say that my biggest concern for you, Amanda, is making sure that you have a fair shake, that, that you, you know, that whoever hears this, whether it's us or whether it's a third party, that you have all of your rights met, and that, that none of us are biased, and that none of us have, you know, the, the parts of it. That's been my biggest concern all along. All of the people who've come up on your behalf at council meetings prior, you know, I know Yoli's been up, Pam's been up, everybody's made comments about, what about Amanda, what about Amanda, and we, we have not been allowed to be involved until this very moment. And so it's been very unfair to the council. We, we ask what we can ask. We ask, where are you at, or is the investigation complete? When do we get to know? And this is it, we're, we're now knowing. So, I, I, my concern is to make sure that it's fair, whether we hear it or someone else hears it.
Hi, concerned citizen again, J.J. Poindexter. This, this thing's gotten so convoluted, it, it's crazy, you know, I mean, it, simplify it. There is a process within our policy rules and regulations that says, if you have agreements against your, your supervisor, you go to the city manager. City manager happens to be her supervisor, so we've got a double-edged sword at that point. But again, all the information you have is what, is what has transpired. You have the information. Read the information.
We don't have the information, so please, please, understand, and this is where it's unfair to this council. We have not received any information whatsoever. The only thing that we know is that a complaint was filed, an investigation happened, the determination of that investigation was obviously termination. That's what we know. We don't know the allegation, all we know is what's been said by the community coming up here to the council.
So, councillor. Rob, uh, Rob, um, Ben Harvey's termination, um, from, from the information that he gathered from a third party, that he came up with the idea of, okay, we're gonna terminate. There's a, another step in the process, the step is, you guys, they want to, she wants to talk in front of you guys, there's a stop, but now, unfortunately, in, um, Ben Harvey's haste, he ends up, you know, firing her in the middle of a due process situation here. And she didn't get it, I mean, she hasn't had a chance to be able to have her day in court with you guys. And again, all she's asking is to have her day in court with you guys. That's what, that's what she's asking. She said she's not gonna bring anybody, because there's nobody to bring. She could, at some point in time, I assume they're gonna get the information, or how does that, how does that, um, that information flow? How, when do they get the information that the investigative, um, attorney, I'm sorry, sir? When do they get the investig, the, the information for that? So, and I know you shake your head, and I know this is driving you crazy, but it's-
No, I'm not shaking my head for that reason.
You're tired of listening to me.
They, uh, they hear the evidence as it's presented by both sides. Uh, that's when the council hears the evidence, gets the evidence, and then after they receive all the evidence, they make a determination. If the council hears it, if they don't hear it, they get the evidence through the third-party independent hearing officer, and then they make a determination based upon, based upon the evidence submitted at the hearing.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, that's the opportunity to be heard, is at, at this stage.
I don't see three days here. I, I'm sorry. I do not see three days here. If, if you guys listen to it, you know, probably within an eight-hour day, this thing could be all academic, if, if you just give her the, give her the opportunity to come in and speak. That's, that's all she's asking. At that time, you will have the information. I, I, I thought you had the information already, and I thought that this was-
Nope.
-part of the, you know, and, I beg your forgiveness, I, again, in thirty years, I've never seen this type of situation happen within the city. We've always been able to sit down and talk about, you know, our issues. However, here we are. Bottom line is, please, give her, her, her time with you guys. A third party, the cost involved and everything else is not the answer here. This thing could get done in, in probably eight hours. Because it's, the bulk of it's gonna be you listening to the city manager's report from whomever gives it to him, if, if it's one councillor or another councillor. Whoever gets that information to you, you're gonna hear it. And then at that time, she could, she can rebut it, and then we're done, let's go have a drink. But this thing's getting blown-
It, it is.
I mean, it's getting way, way out of control here, we're talking third-party, beaucoup bucks, you know, you have empty pockets, maybe. This young lady doesn't. She does not have empty pockets. So, again, I urge you not to, not the third party, I urge you to, to, I, I know you attack it straight on, and, and I meant no disrespect when I said I need the time for you guys to suck it up, and just take it straight on, and, and, um, and I hope that at least three of you are listening, because we gotta get on with other business. Thank you.
Okay, so back to our personnel policies.
Because I, 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 I like, I'm sure, like you, I'm having a hard time, this is way before my tenure here on the island, so I just want to know, a statement was taken from all the people that alleged there were wrongdoings by the, the head of city planning at one time, is that correct? But you guys aren't privy to that, is that because it's a personnel issue and it's super confidential? So there is, there are statements made by people that were questioned by someone, but you aren't privy to those, and you cannot be privy to those? Is that the, is that the deal?
No, we can be privy to those if we, if we take on the appeal, yes.
Okay, so if you can read all of that, and then she wrote back addressing all the things that they stated, and, and I understand what you're saying, that's a lot, is, is that what I'm, is that what I'm processing in my head? Is that correct? So, there's statements, and then she wrote back?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Hi, Debbie Avalon, 327 Metro Pearl. Good to be home in my pajamas at a council meeting. Um, there's a few things I have to say. For one thing, there were two words used by you, Mark, I, I'm taking it, you're an attorney, I tuned in a little late. You said that this is usually, almost always not done this way, I didn't hear illegal. You said it's an, an orthodox approach, I didn't hear illegal, okay? Usually when people are going to a hearing and, and like this, or are gonna wind up in court or whatever, they're kind of adversarial. This gal right here is talking to you like she always has, you're talking to her, Cindy, you haven't even seen this step. I, there is, isn't there a way, before you step forward into actually the hearing and everything else, to, you're the city council, right? And you said unorthodox, Mark, am I correct? And almost always not done this way, and almost always a hearing officer is busy for two months, and almost always? But this is an orthodox situation, this is Avalon, that's Amanda, all right? You're Annie, you're Richard, you're Cindy. I'm Debbie, in her pajamas, what else is new? So, you, you know what I'm saying? Can't you make a motion or some kind of, Scott, this is for you, can't you make a little motion here where Amanda agrees that everybody reads the papers, she gets to make a statement and say what she, before you decide to go to a hearing? You know, before you approach the point where you have to have a waiver? The grievance is not filed, can she back up? Isn't there some thing that you can say to make it normal? Because really, you just want to read it and hear it, and hear what she has to say? Really, she just wants to let you choose, she just said she's not gonna call any witnesses, she just showed her hand. This is not an adversarial war. You're both wanting the same thing. How, how does it have to make a left? And the person that executed the, the event has been canned, all right? So like, you know, let's just say it's the deli, okay, and somebody put a snake in your sandwich, and you've come to me and say, Deb, there's a freaking snake in my sandwich. I go, I fired that bitch, okay? So, I'm gonna give you free sandwiches for the rest of your life, and, you know, kiss your butt in public or something, and we make a deal and we're good, because we're both gonna get what we want. You know I didn't put the snake in your sandwich. As a matter of fact, I was unaware that the snake was in your sandwich, because you'd been in the hospital. So, you, do you know what I'm saying? So, it, it seems to me this is ridiculous, if both parties really are looking for the same solution, how can you have to have a hearing and evidentiary and blah, 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 and call everybody and burn up some more money and go cuckoo for Cocoa Puffs? When you weren't even privy, she knows that, she just told you that. If she was coming out at you, she wouldn't be showing her hand. Scott, isn't there some special hocus pocus, something you can recommend to your council for what they can do to, to resolve this without burning up the money and going nuts? You don't want me to come to every meeting, Scott, do you? All right.
Thank you.
Welcome home, Debbie.
Welcome back, I miss you so much. I know you do. Mark is the council's, is the council's attorney on this.
So again, the, the city rules are, are clear, that the opportunity for an evidentiary appeal has to be given, and, and that's also state and federal law. So again, the city has the ability to present its case as it sees fit, and it has to be afforded that opportunity.
But the city part is gone.
No.
No, it's not.
At this point, at this point, the city is presenting the case against the, against Ms. Cook.
So that, that's assuming that we're supporting the decision that was made by the city manager?
Again, no, 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 wait, wait.
Because we don't know.
Now you're getting into the gray area, you're getting into the-
Okay.
You still have not heard the evidence, and there is evidence out there, a lot of admitted facts that are there, and so our job is, as, as I've been trying to do for months, is to keep the council pure on this. The decision today is solely, do you want to hear this, or do you want to have a subcommittee of the council, or a third party hear this? That's the decision you make today. If you decide to hear this as a body, then you can have another session with, uh, Mark, we can talk with Ms. Cook and see if there's a manner in which we can streamline the process, agree on certain evidentiary statements.
So, you, you made the comment admitted facts.
Yes.
Well, if this comes to us, can't those admitted facts be determined in a, or interpreted in a different light? I mean, are they still admitted, are they still facts if they come to us, or is it, or do those elements need to be determined by us?
Well, if Ms. Cook admits them and the city admits them, then they're facts. And then the question is, the council's explanation for, there may be an explanation as to what happened, but there are certain facts that have been admitted.
Well, I make a motion, I'll make a motion that we hear it and do whatever we can in our ability to streamline and let this go forward.
I second the motion.
Give it a second, comments?
The, the only thing I want to say is, I, I'm happy to hear it, and I appreciate, um, Amanda and everyone else for being here tonight and for speaking their mind, because as I think you're about to see, um, everybody's voice can be heard and decisions can be made unbiased at the time of a meeting, and I just want to implore the rest of my council that, um, we, we do take this very seriously, I know we do. It involves one of our employees, and we need to give this a hundred percent of our attention. Um, we need to read all the material and make sure that we're well-prepared when we get to the point of hearing it. So, however, we can work together if we can, or whatever we need to do, I want to make sure we, we do our part.
Okay, let's call for the vote.
All eyes.
Okay, and now-
Go to the agenda.
Do we do the first?
No, no, that's next.
I need to go grab my pen.
Do, we're gonna take-
Mark's gotta take the-
Oh, yes.
Mark, just say, thank you very much, you have a nice evening. You might make it.
Thank you, Mark. Okay. Well, I'm glad that, I'm glad this guy's made the comments and made.
We're taking a break here.
Oh, we are? And we are black? Okay, let us please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Cindy's here.
Oh, what happened to Cindy?
She was here.
Please place your hand over your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, we will, today, we will not have an invocation, and we will go to announcements. The interim city manager?
I have none.
Okay, any written communications?
No.
Are there any presentations?
There are no presentations.
Is there a interim city manager report?
There is not.
Perfect.
Is there a city attorney report?
No, there is not.
Okay, council member reports. Who would like to start? You want to start with the good news, Mayor Protan?
I will start with the good news. Your Avalon-Lanster High School football team won the final, and they are all, they're CAF champs, in eight-man large school. They, they traveled to Mojave, and the game, it was thirty-nine degrees, it had started, it was thirty-six degrees when it was over, and, um, it wasn't a close game, Avalon won fifty to eight, and it was just a wonderful thing. And we're gonna try to have the team at the hit, the next council meeting here to, that the community applaud them, recommend them.
Okay, yeah, thank, anything else, sir?
I'm defrosting, thank you very much. I will be out of town for a week, going to my mother-in-law's house.
Okay, excellent. Councilmember Sampson?
Um, I just want to say I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving, um, I really love living in, in this community, I really love having relationships with pretty much everybody in town, and the one way or the other, um, we work it out. The holidays can be depressing for some people, so I'm just gonna encourage everybody maybe to reach out to somebody and help them out, um, if you have an abundance, or if you have something more to give, then, um, remember talking to people, wishing them a good day, um, wishing them happy holidays, and, is one thing, but helping them out and extending a hand of gratitude, and, and, um, you know, charity is, is a good thing, and, and, um, I do want to thank the churches as well for, um, helping out some of the people in our town, like, um, there's, we do have a few homeless people in this town, and the churches have reached out to them, there's food pantries at, um- There's food pantries at, um, at the, um, Community Church, uh, Singing Waters is available to help people out as well. I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving and with Christmas coming up, I hope everybody takes care of your own and then take care of a couple extra people as well. And, um, that's it, I just wanted to say, happy holidays.
In light of Mr. Sampson's comments, uh, on Sunday, December 13th, at the Community Church, there's the annual pre-turkey dinner from 5 to 8. It's turkey and stuffing and potatoes and yams and peas and desserts and stuff. So show up there and if you want to volunteer to help, we're always looking for people to volunteer and help. And if you want to contribute a turkey, if you go to Von's and tell them you're giving the turkey to the church, they'll sell it to you for 69 cents a pound, you don't have to spend $25 for the food.
Nice.
Good idea.
That's really great.
Councilmember, Susan Cassidy?
Those were wonderful sentiments, Joe, appreciated. Uh, just to add to that, there are so many different events and, and opportunities to be out and about during this holiday season, um, too many to name, so I would just like to shout out that possibly, uh, calling into the chamber, um, 310-510-1520. Uh, there's so many different things going on, so if you're looking for something to do in any particular evening, also, um, a huge community event is the Shop at Home Night coming up on Saturday, December 5th. And I think, I just stole Amelia's thunder, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry, Amelia. Come, come back up when I'm done, come back up when I'm done, okay? Um, I, I do want to say and send condolences to Rudy Pilch and his family for the loss of Melba, a wonderful member of this community, um, and certainly our hearts go out to their family at this time. Um, I think we're going to let the mayor talk about it, but we all attended an event on Monday, so I'll let the mayor talk about that. I will be attending Gateway City's COG meeting tomorrow night, uh, however, there will be no Transportation Committee meeting. And, um, lastly, I would just want to encourage, um, the, uh, Annie, our mayor, if you would to please work with our city attorney's office in developing some responses to questions that have been raised by our city staff. We had a all-hands meeting on November 21st, there were, um, a barrage of questions that are still unanswered. I know that we have some responsibility in, uh, what we can and cannot discuss, but I would just like to encourage you to work with our attorney's office and develop some responses to some of the questions that can also be made out to the community.
To the questions that were brought up at the meeting that Denise took notes on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't realize there was much unanswered, but I'll review those with Denise and with, uh, Scott. It's your turn, councilman.
Yeah, just want to, just a little shout out to all the city crews. Uh, the city workers have been working very hard, they're getting up all the decorations right now, but, uh, one of the most important things though, I think, is they're all getting ready for this storm that's coming. And we know it's not here yet, we know it's on the way, but right now the city has gotten their K rails, they've cleaned out their ditches, they've been in contact with the island company. Dennis, you guys and all you guys in the city are doing a great job, so keep up the good work, we really appreciate it. And I want a nice little shout out to, I want a little shout out to the, um, hopefully for the football team, I hope we get something going for them, I'd like to see a little parade, Ole. At one time, Ole could be in charge of that, but I'd like to see a little parade for them, like we had years ago down Front Street with the fire trucks or whatever, and get them on stage and introduce them and have a nice little thing for them, on a job well done by the Lancer Football. And that's it for me.
I would also, um, like to add Connie Lopez passed away, um, mother, grandmother, great-grandmother of a lot of, um, residents in Avalon, and she will be missed as well. The good news is, yesterday, we had the dedication of the new D cell plant at Southern California Edison. It was, it was very nicely attended, uh, it was nice to see Jim Luthy on there, he gave a nice little presentation. Don Kanabi, of course, was there, he was, arrived a little bit late because he had some, the, the downed, uh, police officer and then, and then the, uh, the baby incident, so he, he went from two sad, very sad things to a very happy thing, so we, we, we ended his day on a very happy note. Congressman Alan Lowenthal gave the city of Avalon, Southern California Edison, and the county of Los Angeles, uh, wonderful memento, basically congratulating us on the partnership that we created between the three agencies to get the D cell plant in operation. It will be operating effective Monday. And it will be producing 125,000 gallons of water a day, so we're really looking forward to that. So anyway, that's great, great news, and we were all there and we were all smiling. The, um, also breakfast with Santa will be on December 19th at the Big Antonio's from 9 to 11, it's $5, it's a pancake breakfast. Parents order off the menu, bring your cameras, bring your children, and we give them a little token and it's, it's a lovely morning. So that will be happening, we thank Jack Tucci for the donation of his, of his facility for that and cooking up all that food. And adults can order off the menu, but you must pay for it, of course. One of the things I would like us to bring up in perhaps, um, another meeting is, um, as you know, as we go out and, and look for a, a new city manager, um, housing is an issue, and I wanted us to be able to talk about possible housing, um, options going forward. And I can work with Denise on that and, and whomever else, and perhaps Dennis or something, but, um, I think that's something we're going to have to address or look into.
Housing for the new city manager?
New city manager, yes. And the other thing I'd like to say is, I know still, some of the community is still reeling over the termination of the contract of the city manager. Again, all departments have been very supportive of the transition. As you know, um, and I know there's a lot of, there's, there are some people that are very verbal about not being happy with the decision that was made by the majority of the council. However, I'm very disappointed that when people talk like that, they're losing sight of the employees that keep the city operating on a day-to-day basis. We, as, as JJ said, he's, there's been nine city managers since he has been here. The city has never stopped operating, the people are dedicated, sheriffs are dedicated, fire, harbor, public works, everybody is moving along. And to say that things are going to stop and we're going to postpone things is, is showing a disrespect for the employees of Avalon. So I would like that to stop. If, and if you have friends that you want to make, make them to me personally and I, and I'll take it. You know, it, people, people lose track that eight months ago, they terminated in a, with a, you know, just like that, the director of the hospital. People were, oh my goodness, what's going on? Sorry, we can't say anything. And we respected that and we moved forward and the hospital has moved forward. So I think we should put on our big boy panties and girl panties, move forward, support our town and have, and, and let's keep, let's keep Avalon going. This, this is not a disaster. It is, and for some, you think it's a major setback, it is not a major setback, and we will prove that as we move forward. Thank you. Okay, oral communications.
Oh, yes, sir. I think one other, other announcement that's important to make for the children of Avalon?
Oh, yeah.
Um, Descanso Beach is going to have, um, Christmas days, what did they call it?
Winter Wonderland.
Well, the Winter Wonderland, it's going to be the 4th, 5th, and 6th, and the kids were just ecstatic about, ecstatic about it last time and they're doing a lot more out there, so I think you can get information on, possibly the newspaper has it, and I think that last week's newspaper had it, so it's, it's going to be a great event. And if you have children, take them out there because it's going to, it's going to bring a, a really neat beginning to the season for the children.
Very good, very good. Okay, oral communications, this is an opportunity for members of the community to speak. Um, we will, oh, wait, hold on. Wait, no action will be taken at this time. But excuse me, Ralph, before that, would, may we please have the young lady behind you come up and speak with Southern California Edison? We needed to introduce her, I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Adeline Young, and I would like to formally introduce myself as your city's government affairs representatives for Southern California Edison. So prior to joining Edison at the end of last year, I previously spent 16 years at a groundwater management agency to ensure that the region had a reliable supply of groundwater. Now at Southern California Edison, I'm working with my colleagues to ensure that your constituents and the businesses have a safe, reliable, and affordable source of electricity, water, and gas. I was fortunate to have been with you yesterday, um, as we celebrated the partnership between the city of Avalon, the county of Los Angeles, and Edison in the dedication of the second desalination unit. You mentioned already that the D cell unit will be operational next week and it will increase the available drinking water supply for the city. And, um, as announced yesterday, this additional water from the new system allowed the California Public Utility Commission to approve our request to delay the implementation of 50% water rationing, also known to many on the island as Stage 3. I want to thank the council for helping fund the desalination project and for the staff who are working closely with Southern California Edison. I also look forward to working with you and being of service to you, your staff, and your city. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome. Look forward to seeing much more of you, thank you, Adeline.
Ralph Morrow, 222 Metropole. Even though you made that little speech a little while ago, I'm going to give you my two cents worth.
Will take it.
Um, about the city manager. I started in, working in this community in 1975, that's 40 years ago. I served under every single city manager, including Ben, okay? Potentially, he was the best of all of them. And so, I know that, I know the three of you didn't like him there, and I want to thank Cindy and Ole for his vote. I supported him, it was a five to nothing vote, Ole was there when we selected him. We went through about 40 city ma- manager, uh, CVs, and, um, he came out ahead of everybody. And, and if you think you're going to hire a, a headhunter and you're going to get this all done really quick, it takes a new city manager a long time to get up to speed. And we, we considered Denise, and it was between Denise and, and Ben. And we created the executive administrator job for Denise so that she's there and you would let Ben take the heat, and she just covers everything. She's a, she's a good replacement, but I, I think it's, when you get into that looking at city managers, it's not as easy as it sounds, okay? Out of the, out of the 40 CVs that we looked at, there were two that I liked. They were both city managers that had harbors, and, but those weren't picked as the final group. It became Denise and Ben. And after, after a long day of going back and forth and Ole was there, uh, we decided five to nothing, Ben. And we decided Denise would be an executive administrator and basically be the city manager with no pressure that a city manager gets. So, um, I'm, I'm, I'm a little disappointed at you, Annie, for your letter that you put out to the community. You fired him because he didn't live here? That doesn't sound right, okay? Because 25 miles that way is another family that he has, and he goes back and forth, and he has a condo, he, he has an apartment right here in Avalon. So, you, using that, it, it was, it seemed like, uh, it was just, they got rid of him, okay? Now, uh, having, having Joe and, and Richard on, on the council that, that have sort of a negative opinion of a lot of things that go on with the island company, I was expecting you, and you remember, I called you and talked to you a lot, told you to run for mayor? And you really disappointed me because I didn't think we would go through this. So, that's my two cents worth, uh, and, um, I hope things get a little nicer. And by the way, I'm going to run for mayor, okay?
Congratulations. Thank you for your comment.
Allison Osinski, 356 Sumner. Couple things, uh, one thing I'd like to bring up again is, uh, the possibility of the city taking over the shoreboat and water taxis. As you know, they've stopped running and this has become a, a problem for boaters. Uh, I'd like to see the city either take over or offer a yearly fee like they do at Two Harbors. When I go up there, I have free shoreboat rides because I pay a yearly fee for it. Right now, the best thing I think would be to add just a fee to the mooring fee, most boaters would take the water taxis if it was part of the fee they paid already. Just, just so you know, this past weekend for Thanksgiving, I had a crew aboard my boat, we came in and out twice and it cost us $160 in, in rides to and from, this is ridiculous. Uh, we, we need to do something about that. The second point relating to the harbor, uh, I've asked again when the city is going to buy dock carts. It's the only place I've ever had a boat where there's no dock carts. We're all still borrowing, uh, former Mayor Bob's scuba carts. But, uh, that needs to get on the list somewhere. Another item, real quick, status of meeting with the island company about designating land for the aquatic complex. You all promised us what's going to happen, you're going to have regular meetings, monthly, weekly meetings. Year and a half later, I haven't seen any, uh, results of that. We want to get started with this project during my lifetime. Let's, let's get that agreement so we at least have the land. We've got people who are interested in working with us on building that complex. We can get started if we just get the land designated. Uh, also, Ben Harvey told me repeatedly at these meetings that on March 31st and no later, we would have an answer about whether we can put a reverse osmosis systems in our houses. Well, you know, March 31st has come and gone, it's December, I still don't have that answer. And I would like an answer for myself and at least 21 other people who would like to put in our own RO systems. Uh, also, one more quick item, uh, I've repeatedly asked the city council to look into the agreement with the tuna club. 28 years after the lawsuit that was stopped by agreement, there are still no women members of the tuna club, there are still, uh, no, the city is not being able or invited to use the tuna club when it's not being used by members, which was part of that agreement. And also, um, as part of that agreement, they said that they would be running programs for residents and youth about learning to fish, and I don't see any of that going on either. So I'd like you to look at this, I feel they're discriminating against at least half the population of the city, and they're getting a deal from the city on rent. So I'd like to see them out of there, I think the city could take over that property and we could make money on it, or we could ask them to buy the land and we could pay for the pool and rec center with that money. But I'd like you to at least look into this a little more seriously and not, I don't want to hear any more excuses about they'd be uncomfortable sharing the bathrooms upstairs or, or we can't dictate to them who's, who are their members. I think they're on city property, we can't dictate that they not discriminate.
Thank you, Allison.
It's me again, sorry. Yolanda Montano, but, um, 20 Canyon Terrace, and, um, I'm on my, I'm putting my commissioner hat on right now. Um, I just want to let you know that, um, as a commissioner of the planning, um, commission, I, I accept your decision on, um, what transpired with the city manager, and I have full faith in our body in front of us and, um, the city staff and that we can all move forward and things will get done. And, um, we lost Amanda for months and the department, I mean, it was kind of crazy, but we got through it and I don't think we were held up on, on, on anything, and, um, I have faith in our city and I think that, I have faith in all of you guys, and I think that, um, uh, the decision was made and we need to accept it and we need to move on. I mean, this is democracy and it was, you know, it takes three votes to pass something, three votes to deny something, and sometimes we can't make everybody happy, and, um, I just want to thank you guys, every single one of you brings something to our community, and I know it's, sometimes it's a thankless job and, um, it gets a little stressful. it's a thankless job, and it gets a little stressful, and I just hope at the end of the day, we can all like get along and be happy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Doug Federall, Captain Avalon Sheriff's Station, Mayor, council members, staff. Gives me great pleasure to introduce to you our newest employee. He's been a personal friend of mine for the past twenty-five years. He's been on the sheriff's department for twenty-eight years. He has spent most of his time patrolling the South Bay and Carson and Lomita area. I think he's going to be a great addition to the station. He's going to be our detective sergeant, replacing Sergeant Luna, who's retiring at the end of January. Without further ado, Gary Ross.
Council members, mayor, it's my pleasure to be here. I hope to serve few in the community to the expectations that Doug set before me.
Great. Welcome aboard. You're a beautiful place.
Those are some big shoes to fill, too, but congratulations to Mr. Luna.
David Hart, Recreation Department. We had a very successful Thanksgiving community holiday food program this year. The city, along with donations from the Lions Club, Rotary, and SEI Company, purchased forty-four boxes of Thanksgiving turkeys with all the dressings and pumpkin pie. The list was compiled by SEI Company, CIMC, Singing Waters Bible Church, the Community Church, and Avalon Schools. A big applause goes out to Myra Campo from Avalon Schools, who verified the phone numbers and the addresses so we can get the boxes to the people. The city then passed out all forty-four boxes here at City Hall, or we delivered them to those who did not have any form of transportation. So a big thank you for all those who gave and participated in helping to make this a holiday special. Also wanted to talk about the SEI Company also doing the Winter Wonderland again, Descanso Beach, December fourth through sixth. I mentioned this not just because it's a great fun, family fun holiday activity, but because the proceeds will be going to local nonprofit organizations, as well as many of the Avalon Schools, clubs, and sports programs. So I hope you're able to go and have a good time, and know that you'll be helping and supporting many organizations with their fundraising goals. We've also, a little update on the skate park. Our Public Works Crew, along with Chris, Chris Arnold, and Mo, have been, have cleaned up the skate park, have been, have fixed the ramps. We have a couple little extra items that we have to fix before we can open it up. Chris believes that we can have that ready and done and open by next week. And then we're also working along with the Public Works in moving the K rails to either across the way or moving them alongside the fence, just in case if it rains that we're able to stop the flow of mud and also the dirt that might come into the skate park. Currently, right now, Chris is also working on the ideas of new items to be put in there, and Maureen and I will both be working on planning an entire skate park within the month. And then also, last but not least, I want to thank the council for taking the time and hearing the employees out in that special council meeting. I know it was not easy to do, but you were brave and right in meeting with us. We are, we are hoping we are able to continue that in a positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Thank you very much for all you're doing.
Just wanted to give you an update on the fuel dock project. It's proceeding well, except yesterday we got a report of hazardous materials that are behind the stucco. It's going to set us back a couple weeks, but we're, we're on it now. It's an extra expense. Contractor, of course, could not have known it. It was unforeseen, but we need specialists now to remove the stucco and contain it and ship it off the island. But other than that, it's proceeding well. Like I said, the schedule's going to take a couple week hit, and it's going to cost some money, the extent of which we don't know yet, but we're proceeding.
Thank you for the great news, Dennis.
The good news is we're proceeding.
No, I know.
Yes.
Amelia Lincoln, Catalina Island Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau. Thank you to Cindy for bringing up Shop at Home. I want to talk a little bit about that event and then another holiday event that the chamber is co-sponsoring. So Shop at Home Night, as Cindy mentioned, is this Saturday, the fifth. This also functions as our community tree lighting and the arrival of Santa. It kicks off at five o'clock PM right on Regly Stage. We will have some of the kids from KidVentures singing some holiday songs. We'll have Santa, and then the tree lighting, and then we encourage everyone to go out and about and patronize all of our local retailers that are offering special discounts only good for that night. With the purchase of your treasure card, as we call it, for just a few dollars, you also receive a shopping pass that is good for additional discounts throughout the month of December. But if you come out on the night, you get additional discounts, and you also get the opportunity to join our, to enter a total of twenty different drawings for various prizes. They range from gift baskets to, to reservations to our New Year's Eve gala in the casino. So we have nineteen retailers participating this year. Plus, if you visit each of the nineteen retailers, you are then entered to our, into our drawing for New Year's Eve. So ten to thirty percent savings at a variety of, of local retailers. So come out, have a great time, and shop till you drop.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
And then the second event is the Holiday Home Tour, which is taking place the next weekend, December twelfth, and we are co-sponsoring that event with the Catalina Island Medical Foundation. Tickets are fifty dollars. They're available at the visitor center on the Green Pier, or you can also purchase them online. The details about how to do that are available on this flyer, which is posted around town online, and also available on the table over here. But it's a fundraiser for the Medical Center Foundation. There's four homes that are going to be on display in varying styles, and some of them are going to be decorated extra special for the holidays. There's also a secret stop at a hidden wine cellar, and transportation between locations is provided. So if you want more details, you can call us at the chamber, stop by, pick up a flyer, but that's going to be another great event on December twelfth.
Thank you very much. And we want to, you know, I want to do a shout out to the chamber. I mean, I really find, I mean, previous, that worked fine, too, but I can't believe just the go, the staff is, is really awesome. Jim, you're doing, I think, great leadership with them. I get so much stuff on my machine, my phone, from you, and I find it all over the place, and, and you're giving updates, and you're, you're bringing your, the whole community onto your website, which I really appreciate. Thank you, thank you very much for what you do. Oh, no, oh, no. Never mind, didn't say, come on, talk. You told me on my phone today.
Well, no, I just wanted to remind the community and council of one more event that we're doing in partnership with the city, and that is on December eighth. We're calling it To Shred or Not to Shred, having two sessions, one at noon and one at one PM here in council chambers, where we'll have a specialist available to educate you on document retention and what you're, what's appropriate to keep in an electronic environment versus hard copy. And then one week later, we'll be offering the community shred event where you'll be able to drop off and receive a certificate of secure shredding any important documents that we don't want to have entering our waste stream and filling our landfill. So that's all, and thank you for the compliments, ma'am.
No, you're welcome. Jim, before you, before you go, could you answer a question that was posed to me? Will the items actually be shredded on island, or will they be boxed up?
They'll be put into secure containers, locked, and taken to their secure shredding facility.
So from the moment somebody drops off whatever, you know, confidential documents that need to be shredded or whatnot, that is safe and secure?
Right. The agency that we have partnered with is, is a professional secure shredding agency, and they have all of their, I'll say certifications.
Great. Thanks.
And also, the museum is having their open house and symphony on the eleventh, is that correct? Does anybody have the specifics on that one?
It's on the eleventh.
Yes. So, and there's the cookies and whatever up at the Anam Nanaeta on the tenth.
There's so many events.
There's so much going, let alone parties.
That's why I refer to the chamber to list those.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Yes.
I just wanted to make a correction and then a quick statement, a correction on last night. I had mentioned that the, to get tickets for the museum's event on Friday evening, but it's actually first come, first served for this evening, and it's complimentary, so it's open for anybody. So just a heads up on that. Make sure you get there nice and early to grab your seat. It's a great show. I just wanted to kind of expound on the comment that I made last night, because I heard around town that certain council members were upset that I had spoke from the dais of my unhappiness with the decision about Ben. I'm happy to speak with any of you in person, and I'm sure we'll be doing that at some point soon. But my comment specifically was that you have broken up a team that was in the middle of becoming a successful team. They were already performing. I have extreme faith in Denise and in the entire staff, including Amanda and Al from Planning. They are high performers, and they have been, I think, much more than most people in the city actually realize, and I get to see that on a firsthand basis because I know how often each of the members of my family is here every night, every weekend, for every sporting event and holiday event and festival and show, and how often it means we don't actually get to get together as a family, we get together as a family at an event. So I have absolute faith in these people. Their work has not stopped, and just because they don't have Ben here, that doesn't mean they're not going to keep doing what they already did before Ben was here. My comment was that he was a strong leader, and I think, and this is funny because Ralph and I tend not to agree all that often. I agree with Ralph. He was the person that was right for the job. The potential that he was bringing to this town and the amount that he had already executed was significantly higher than what you have seen in previous city managers. And I think we're kind of kicking ourselves in both shins and the butt because we made the decision that we did. And I say "we" because we all voted you in, so it's our decision as much as it is yours, even though I don't agree with it. And I think that it is better for me to get up here and say that I don't agree with it than it is for me to talk about you guys behind your back like most of the town does. So, and I'm, I'm, sorry, I don't, that's not meant to be disrespectful, but I would rather have you hear it from me than have someone say, "Oh, I heard Lisa was talking about you." I didn't agree with the decision. I don't think it was a smart one. I'm hoping that the process that you have to now go through is a successful one and that you find someone that was as good as Ben or as good as Denise. I don't know that you will. I don't know that you'll find someone that's willing to be here on the island full-time. I don't know that you will. I also think you forget that the only concern we have to go off of is the comment you made in the paper stating that you were concerned he wasn't here full-time.
I didn't say that.
That was the only statement. You said, "I can't talk about what the reasons are, but I would have appreciated him being here full-time."
I said, "We would look, we would be looking for a city manager that would be here full-time."
Right. Well, the part that you forget about him not being here full-time, because that was the only comment that seemed like it was a reason of why you had dismissed him, he was over town going to meetings. He was over town working. He was over town making connections that most people that live here tend not to make when they're working on behalf of the city. So I don't know. I don't know that that's a valid reason right now. I don't know with the way that the, the century is in terms of communication and being able to function from any place in the world, that that necessarily is a deal breaker right now. I agree, and you know, you guys know me, that I'm very much more old-fashioned than most people tend to be when it comes to a lot of things in this community, that it's good to have someone that lives here. It's good to have someone that knows the community. But I think you also had someone that was willing to be that bridge in between where we are and where we have been and where we want to go, and you just cut that bridge. So I'm sorry that you think people are upset with it or discontent with it, but you have to understand that it was a very, I don't know, a very untimely and somewhat incorrect decision to make to me, so.
And I respect your opinion. Thank you, Lisa.
I'm here to reiterate what I said last night. I'm very disappointed in your decision of releasing Ben. Ben was not hired to make friends. Ben was hired to do a job. His job was to come in here and balance the budget and get the ship righted, which he was doing. One person who still, well, two people that are on the council were on the council that hired Ben, and they went with somebody that didn't have personal connections to this community so he could make those decisions, and he was making those decisions. So I really, I really think you made the wrong decision in doing that, and you brought up the fact that the hospital fired its CEO, which they did do before I got on that board. And we are now, just now, getting the final two candidates to come for their final two interviews. It is not going to be a four-month process. You're looking at least six months to, to eight months to get that done. So, but I just think that you guys made the wrong decision. It was, the job was being done. Any boss is, is there to make sure that people are doing their jobs, and if they're not doing their jobs, then they shouldn't be there.
Respect your opinion also, Michael. Thank you very much.
I wanted to thank you very much for the decision that you made regarding the city manager. I think it was timely. I think that, yes, some very good, positive things happened under our old manager. It's a position that requires a scalpel, not a sledgehammer. What we got was not the scalpel treatment. We didn't, the, the city manager didn't take the time to build the consensus on the actions that were taken in this very small community where everybody knows everything about everybody, or at least they talk like they do. And what I observed in all of my years of management, I see the success rate for one who is a consensus builder and can work with a scalpel, making a very clean cut and a quick healing, is much different than a man who wields a sledgehammer and causes dissatisfaction in many different facets. And if you weren't dissatisfied, you wouldn't have terminated him. And I have been shocked by the number of people in the city that tell me how great it is he's gone. I didn't realize there was a majority out there if you had voted. And so, to me, it's, it's just boggling. I'm not saying he didn't do some good things in a good way. I'm just saying he didn't accomplish them the way that they need to be done in this little community. And all, don't forget that all of his actions were done in consultation with an attorney that cost us over a half a million dollars a year, almost three-quarters of a million dollars a year. So when you look at the city manager, don't blame just him. He was taking advice and counsel from a man that you're paying over a half a million dollars a year with our tax money. So I just ask that you look at the big picture on this, and maybe the next city manager, we won't hold him totally responsible when decisions were made about firings that maybe shouldn't have happened or decisions that were inappropriate. It's just a big picture, but let's find a professional who knows how to build a consensus and can work cleanly with a scalpel and not necessarily smack everybody right around with a, with a sledgehammer. Thank you.
I respect your opinions as well. Thank you. Any other comments?
Quick follow-up comment. Some of us are very much in favor of having city leaders live here in Avalon, and I think that's a, a good point to bring up. When we have a town where the city manager, the city attorney, the head of two of the largest groups in town don't live here, I think that's why they don't understand some of the issues in town. I think it's important to find somebody who will be willing to live here.
Thank you for your comments as well. Come on up, Chuck Martin.
I have something, Chuck Martin, 352 Catalina, on the DSal plant. I was curious as to, are we going to like do the whole town with the DSal plant now once we get this other unit online? And if that happens, do we just kind of leave the reservoir at two-hundred thousand or two-hundred acre feet? And I think maybe Joe had brought up once before, it would be nice if we had a way that if we only use two-hundred thousand gallons a day, can the excess go somewhere for a rainy day? I was just curious as to how all, how the new DSal plant will affect the reservoir as it is today and will, will Hamilton Cove, which I guess draws from up above?
Can you answer, since there's nobody from Southern California Edison here to answer that technically?
I can go into that. So that was in the agreement. So the water is just added, so everyone in the city gets the benefit of the water. And what, what you will see is, is because of the added capacity during the off-season... And what you will see is, is because of the added capacity during the off-season, the water that is delivered, the potable water that is delivered is from the D-Sol plant, okay?
For the Hamilton Cove and everything?
For everyone.
Not Hamilton.
Well, no, no, yeah, right. Hamilton's on its own separate, but everyone in the city will get it. What this means is, is that during the winter, the fall, and the early spring, the reservoir will not be relied upon as much, if at all, right now. They're just gonna, you know, so, the reservoir will then be used during the summer, and we put provisions in the agreement that required Edison to make its best efforts to use the D-Sol first, to keep the reservoir as high as possible. Even when it's in the stage two or one, that doesn't mean that they shut the D-Sol plant down. It is, they are required to use the reservoir as a secondary source in the D-Sol first.
If the Alino didn't come this year, by next summer, the reservoir could likely be down to 120 acre feet or...
We don't start drawing down the reservoir till like, mid-June on the weekends, and weekends in July and August. The plant right now will make 325 gallons a day, 325,000 gallons a day. And in peak summer days, they sell like 600,000 gallons.
With the addition of the new one, it's more than 225.
No, it's 325.
325 total.
200 on the old one, and 120. Because the new one is processing the brine, it's not as efficient as processing the seawater. So it puts the brine into the new plant, and it produces about 125,000 gallons of fresh water a day. But we won't, we'll slow the draw down, especially in this winter, spring, summer, and fall, or not the summer, the summer we will draw down the reservoir, because we don't, we don't have 600,000 gallons of production.
I totally misunderstood, I thought the 150,000 gallons that the new unit made was added to the 200,000 that the old unit made.
The old unit makes 200,000, the new unit, using the brine as the source water, will make about 125,000 gallons.
But it doesn't add to that 200?
Oh, no, that does add to them, so something, 325,000 gallons total.
It makes it 300.
Okay, you said 225.
Yeah, 325 total, about an acre foot a day.
And they did, they originally did say it was, that it was possibly projected to have an output of 150,000 gallons, so, and then I heard yesterday that it was 125, so that was a miss.
Do we have water pumped down from the reservoir through a big pipe, is there any way we can reverse it and send the water back up there when we have more than we need?
No, but I've heard that, I heard that they possibly could do it to the two tanks up here above in Falls Canyon?
They do, they do ship the excess water.
They do have, they do have that water capability to do that for those, I think.
Oh yeah, it does, can remember.
Those 100,000 gallon tanks.
Yeah, and it does go up there.
And it goes up there, to the 100,000 gallon tanks.
Okay, anything else before we move on to the consent calendar? I think we're good, okay, consent calendar. Denise, ready?
All right, we have six items on the consent calendar this evening, we have actions, two sets of them, one from the special city council meeting of November 10th, and one of the regular city council meeting of November 17th. Second item is authorization to award the interim K-Rail debris barrier on Pebly Beach Road and Casino Way. Recommended action is to authorize the award of the contract to the lowest responsible, responsive bidder, which was Jordal Construction. And second recommended action is to appropriate funding and/or authorize additional expenditures the amount of 15% of the total contract price as a contingency for unforeseen and additional cost on the project. The third is to authorize the city manager to approve change orders on the project up to the contingency amount. The third item on consent calendar is an Easy Loader Boat Trailer. Recommended action, authorize the harbor master to purchase the one 2016 axle, triple-axle roller trailer. From, I'm sorry, from the Easy Load Boat Trailer Company in the amount of $12,158. Item four is the maintenance equipment purchase, and is to authorize the harbor master to purchase this equipment in the amount of $16,758.56. Item five is the Avalon City Park Equipment and Surfacing Expenditure. Recommended action is to prove the expenditure for new play elements and surfacing, including shipping and installation for the Avalon City Park, for a not-to-exceed amount of $50,000. Item six is consideration to award Pebly Beach Engineering and Cost Survey and Report, RFP to ESG Engineering, and recommended action is to allow city staff to enter into a contract with ESG Engineering to conduct the Pebly Beach Engineering Cost Survey and Report for a not-to-exceed amount of $35,000.
Okay, council, what is your pleasure?
I don't want to pull anything, I just want to make a comment if I could, on item number five for the Avalon City Park Equipment and Surfacing Expenditure. I just want to say to our city staff, if we could please look into some better lighting somewhere down the, down the road, to just brighten that space up and make it a little more inviting. So I don't need to pull it.
And we're excited about the swings.
Very.
Would you like to?
I'll make a comment on the park, other than us just suddenly spending money here and there because Parsac says we need you, can't we have an overall plan? I was always told that we couldn't move the volleyball and basketball courts to city park because it wasn't city land. Well, if we're gonna spend $50,000 on new equipment, perhaps this would be the time to move out there, instead of having the ugly fencing and the inappropriate, that's the gateway to our community, and right now, it's not very attractive.
And Misa, you've been able to see that, you saw the plans and everything that they've lined up with the new project?
No.
Oh, okay.
This is for the machine gun park? This isn't the, this isn't the park along the walkway?
If we're gonna spend $50,000 there, why not move the volleyball and the basketball courts to there? Always before when I've asked that that would be a more appropriate place for those things, was told, "Well, it's not city property, so we can't do it." Well, if we can spend $50,000 of city money, why can't we do that?
I believe this is also grant money from, this, this one is not, okay, I'm sorry.
The one thing, and Jen, you can come chime in, $50,000 wouldn't touch putting basketball courts in that, in that area, let alone possibly the size, but I don't know, you all are the experts in the rec department, but it...
I would also like to encourage you, Misa, to talk to Jen and David in the Recreation Department, there is discussion about the park system along the waterfront happening.
I'm aware of some of that, but the fencing's still gonna be there, so I think we're not really accomplishing much. I haven't seen the plans, but when I've heard of what they are, it doesn't sound like we're really, we're keeping those there, which is not a good place for them to be. The balls are in the water, they're in the street, they're on the sidewalks, they're hitting people, the language is inappropriate for our visitors when they first come and leave.
There, isn't there plans for where the volleyball courts are at, or?
But not the basketball, at this point.
Not the basketball, but where the volleyball courts are.
Yeah, that was gonna be.
That's gonna have a different type of fencing, it's gonna be actually really nice.
Lower.
It's gonna be lower, and it's gonna have some architectural design to it that's kind of more pleasing. Maybe we can work on the basketball courts, getting it to look a little bit better, but I think there's gonna be some major improvements out there, since it is the gateway. Thank you, Misa.
Okay, well, okay. Further, no other comments, let's go back to the consent calendar. Is there anything that you'd like to pull?
Yeah, I'd like to pull, talk about number two, item number two and number six, and then make a motion to approve items one, three, four, five.
Okay, one, three, four, and five?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Only second? Further comment? Call for the vote.
All eyes?
Item number two.
Item number two, I just, it's an authorization to award interim K-Rail debris barrier on Pebly Beach and Casino Way. I think that's very important, it's something we need to do. My concern is, when, if there's a landslide, when there's a landslide, and, and the fencing that is put up winds up in the road with a landslide out there, because I don't think it's far-fetched to think that, if we get as much rain as predicted, there's gonna be some rocks coming down. The whole idea is to keep, keep the rocks that fall down year-round, keep people safe on that road, so, you know, no matter how much money we're spending, if it saves one life, it's, and it saves one accident, then it's well worth it, you can't put a price on a life. So I think it's a good investment. I just want to know, who is gonna be responsible after the, after the fencing is up, to maintain it, and to clear that area if there is a problem with the landslide? I'm just really concerned about that, and I want there to be some kind of a conclusion as to what our plan, our go-to plan is gonna be if that happens, because there's no amount of wall or fence that's gonna keep a mountain down.
Yeah, that's a concern. We've designed the fencing on top of the K-Rail to be panels, so that if one big rock knocks it over, it's just that one panel that's gonna go.
Oh, okay.
We changed the design before we went to public bid, excuse me, because we were concerned with the same thing you are, councilman. And maintenance is gonna have to be Public Works, as far as I know. We're just gonna have to maintain it.
Public Works, and then we will have the ability to go to Jordal Construction, since they are gonna put it up, and they will know the design and how it works if we need to, correct? If it's an emergency, and I appreciate Public Works doing the amount of work they're doing, and wanting to do more, I think that's great, and...
Well, ideally, we'd prefer not to hire, hire out to do it in-house, we think we'll save money that way. And like I said, in the contract, they're providing us, I think, 25 additional panels that we're gonna store at the warehouse, and if one is damaged, it's a quick, easy fix to insert a new panel.
Okay, well, I want you to know that I want to support Public Works on, because there was a request made in our employee meeting the other day, that it would be beneficial for the city to have more heavy equipment. In particular, in the future, I'm gonna reach out to yourself and, and some of your staff as to what would be the major pieces of equipment that we could utilize on a year-round basis, so you guys can have at your disposal. And I'd like to, in the future, find a way that we could possibly purchase equipment or lease it, and make payments on it, so that our city is equipped in efficient, effective, expedient way to make the repairs that we need to be, that need to be made around the city. Whether it be a loader, a dump truck, a high lift, we'll talk about that, okay?
We're gonna be coming to you in future council meetings, for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
And councilmember Sampson, just in the original agreement that we drafted about four years ago with the island company, they are required to contribute, I believe it's $42,000 a year to road maintenance for Pebly Beach Drive. So, so, so that was part of the deal that we got.
Okay, that's great news.
Okay, then, well, so that would lead me into item number six, can we go on to that? Or do we need to approve?
Are you sure, vote it one at a time?
Yes, let's go ahead and approve this item.
Okay. Yeah, I make a motion to approve item number two.
Okay, and recommended items one, two, and three?
Second.
And second, or only? Call for the vote.
All eyes?
Okay, item number four? Or number six?
Okay, so it's a consideration to award Pebly Beach Engineering and Cost Survey and Report, RFP to ESG Engineering. It's a company that's gonna be paid $35,000 to assess what's going on on Pebly Beach Road. We have some fishers, as you know, we had some fishers underneath Avalon Lover's Cove, and obviously, there was a problem there that was unseen from the top of the road. Luckily, there was no injuries, and, and the road is fixed to this point. So, I just wanted to bring it to the, to the public's knowledge that this money is money well spent. I know it's a lot of money, and we've gotten criticism for you guys are just throwing money at everything that comes up. I understand there's, there's an opportunity that we, if we spend this money, we could, and we have to spend it in order to possibly get a grant to get this money reimbursed to us. That road is, it handles all of our public, it, it, all of the public, let's say, gas, energy, our, our waste, it goes out, out to the waste treatment plant, the water, there's a lot of different lines that go under that road. It's really important that we do this particular survey here, and I do believe it's, it's money well spent. I do also want to ask a question to the council, and that is, at what point do we say we can't afford Pebly Beach Road anymore? And at what point do we stop investing city money in a road? And I know it's important, it's our freight line, it's our gas, it's our fuel, it's our, it's our sewer treatment waste. At what point do we say enough is enough, and we can't do this anymore?
Well, let me just remind the council that the $800,000 repair for Pebly Beach Road, that is being paid for by the state of California, it's not city money, it's the state of California. And what our agreement with Parsac is, is that in order for them to keep ensuring Pebly Beach Road, we have to make the repairs that have been council-approved in item number two. We believe that once those repairs are done, that the road will be safe. What the council's ultimate decision will be is, if there is a slide, repairing it, and then the big decision that the council will have in years is the walkway. Because that is gonna be an expensive item, because you're gonna, if you want to extend the walkway all the way out. But we believe based upon the engineering reports that we've reviewed, and the plan, that Pebly Beach Road will be able to be open for, for years, and again, the money, part of, part of the attorney fees you spend was to get that $800,000 from the state, rather than have the city pay.
So once we do, do this survey, we will better know exactly what we're looking at as far as repairing that road. Is there money to repair the road, is there money that we could possibly bid for in a grant, or maybe county or state support on that?
Yes, we get, we get money every year from the state and federal government as part of the, the gas tax, and then there's always grants available, federal grants available, especially for, for our roadwork, so.
So we can better understand what we have to do, and then also, we can add in what we'd like to do, which is make that walkway a little bit safer, and, and something that, you know, we can rest assured that people have a fairly, a fairly safe place, that they can go and enjoy the sunrise and the sunset, and, and just take a, a walk for exercise. That sounds good. I like this, and I just wanted to reach out to the public and let you know that this, I believe this is a good investment that we're making, and it is an investment in our community, because this, this road is really important to the recreation for, for a lot of people. They can't climb hills, and they can't go mountain climbing or running or swimming, they just nice, like taking a nice walk, so I'd like to make the motion to approve item number six.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Call for the vote.
All eyes?
And general business, item number seven.
Item seven is a discussion regarding the Recreation versus Community Services Department. Currently, in this fiscal year, we have two full-time employees in that department, a Recreation Coordinator and a Recreation Assistant, and then we have seasonal, part-time employees that we hire. Two members of the city council have requested that this item come before the general public to have a discussion, and that is Mayor Marshall and Councilmember Cassidy, so I'm gonna let you take over, I know you've spoken to the Recreation Department and gotten their feedback.
You wanna run with it, or you wanna?
Use me?
Okay, so, oh, let's see, where do I begin? My, my goal would be to develop the Recreation Department to add community services. In years past, there has been some community services available, staffing has... Staffing has changed significantly. The department has, I don't want to say lost a few employees, but the department has gone from a larger number of employees down to now one and a half to two full-time employees. And because we're in a position now where we're potentially, one of our members is moving to another position, and also that we've been in process with a class, or with a COF study that we've been underway with, rather than just plug another person into the position, I really wanted to look at and get feedback from the community and also from other city staff if they'd like to, but certainly from the council as to what do we hope and dream that this department can be and what services could we provide? And hopefully, by the end of this, give staff some direction on moving forward. For me, I've watched over the last year and a half that two employees, along with some part-time assistants, have been tremendously taxed as far as workload. And we, as a council, we have goals that we want to see happen, and we really just don't have the bandwidth to move forward. So in addition to looking at fulfilling the needs of recreation as it currently sits, I believe that we are lacking in community services and different things that we could provide to the community. And I believe that that would come with possibly filling the structure as it sits now and making some adjustments in it, so.
Jenner, David, would you like to comment?
And I have lots more to say. I was going to give it to you first.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I was just going to ask what, if you wanted to say what your thoughts were in putting this on the agenda, and then...
Well, I didn't know it was going to come up so quickly, because, you know, I've been a proponent of a needs assessment for a long time to see which way we wanted to go. And that has been delayed for over a year. So, I mean, yes, in the old days when I was here, and it was a Department of One, both things were done, and then I ended up getting a half-time person and a full-time person, and two people who were doing both activities. The, along with grant writing and everything else that you guys are doing now, you know, so, and then in the senior activities. So, but I just don't know where we want to go, because I'm still so curious where the community wants to go. So sometimes I don't, so I don't know if it's a little premature, I guess. But go ahead, David.
Well, I've been on the staff now for a year and a half. And coming on and working with Jen as my supervisor and the director of the department, I felt like we were moving in a really positive direction in that department. But over the last year, we've had some moves that have happened within the department. And as Cindy has mentioned, Jen will be moving from the department on. And so, but over, I would say, almost, I would say, eight months or so, we haven't had somebody in that position of a director. And so, I've been, I've been without direction. And so, I have been tasked to do a lot of things that I have no power to move forward in, because I'm not the person to move us into that direction. But one, things I do see that we can, I think would be incredibly helpful, especially as the city grows and the demands of the Recreation Department grows, I believe, like Cindy, we should definitely have a Recreation Department in some fashion, whether it's the Recreation Coordinator and a community service. Because I know as somebody who's had to do both of them as one person, it can get chaotic, because there's so many just day-to-day activities that you have to take care of, as well as trying to do the future planning. And really, the future planning is a lot of fun to look forward to and be part of. And we have a lot of programs that we would love to improve and actually create. But as one person, it's nearly impossible to do that, because you're just tasked with the day-to-day activities. So I really do believe that somebody who's in community service, as well as somebody who's doing the day-to-day and the recreation, and then somebody who's the directive for the entire program. Because you really do need two people to kind of be the boots on the ground to enact what is being directed towards them. And then we need somebody who's going to hold that future for us and move us towards some of these bigger projects, such as turfing, such as the park projects, the Fit Trail, going out, finding grant money for shade structures, dealing with, creating new banner systems, dealing with software issues. There's so many just administrative issues that need to be covered, that we do need somebody who can administrate that and two people who can be those boots on the ground. I feel it's the most effective, efficient way to do it. And in whatever way I'm utilized, I'm happy and proud to be part of this department. I'm happy to be proud to be part of this city. And so, but I think we need to make these efforts soon, sooner than later. Thank you.
So I think one of the things that we talked about earlier was the position of director is there, it's budgeted for. So my recommendation would be to fill this position with the caveat that either we go out and do a community needs assessment now to help develop that job description, or we work with our human resource consultant to come up with, you know, all possibilities of what this job could be, but still move forward to get some direction for the department. Then from there, we currently have a Recreation Coordinator position and a Recreation Aid position. And then we have the part-time assistant, you guys correct me, please, where I'm wrong. And then we have some part-time summer infill and whatnot. So my then-recommendation would be, could we then look at what it would be to shift, to keep the Recreation Coordinator in that same, in that position as it holds in the org chart, but then move the, what was a Recreation Aid position into a Community Services Coordinator? So you have delineated responsibilities, that you're not having two different people trying to do the community services, two different people doing the recreation. So you've got a director who's guiding the department, you've got David who's doing recreation, and you've got John Doe over here, or Jane Doe, who's doing community services. So when recreation requires the additional assistance, community services assists in that and vice versa. If there's a community event that is community service-related and this person's leading that, then you have recreation, the infills where needed. But when we talk about, you know, different types of community services, it isn't just the sports programs that we have. I mean, we have a lot of senior activities that I believe we're missing out on. We have a lot of collaboration with the council that we're missing out on, working on our goals that the council's already been talking about for a year and a half. We've got things that we're missing out on, President's Challenge Awards. We, you know, talk about wanting to be a fit community and Walk to School Day. And, you know, there's so many other senior programs. And the big thing for me is with a particular director position, that's at the level where somebody's got experience running programs previously. This would be my hope with a director position, that they have the experience running programs previously, that they have the avenues to go after additional grant funding, that they know how to put these programs together. They can work at the level with our finance director that says, okay, here's the assessment of what this is going to cost if we do this program. Here's some funding we could go after to put this program in place, and then we have the bandwidth of the staff to go and run the program. So right now, our staff, our grants, everybody is so overtaxed that we don't have enough time to go after money that's sitting there. And then, most importantly, I know that I'll get some nods in the audience for this, is that a director position is a position that would be able to work with the Island Company, that would be able to move us forward on finding the land to do a community center and an aquatic center, however that ends up being. So we do not have, and I'm going to just put it out there, we do not have the bandwidth in our city staff right now to do what it takes to move forward on that project. And we keep talking about it and talking about it. But in all fairness, you know, David, you're not the person to do this, and you are the first person to throw up your hands and say, oh, please don't make me move forward with this. So I would like to see the city's goals, the council's goals, move forward. But we need to give some support to this department, and we need to move forward with hiring the positions that are vacant and determining, you know, what we want them to be.
I absolutely agree with you. And, you know, I think it's a position, you know, I feel like I'm a competent person. But for what you're saying, as in the education that that person would have or the experience that person would have at that time, they need that now. We don't have time, I mean, it's pretty much negotiating against myself. We don't have time for me to learn that position. And, but, one thing I am good is I'm a soldier, man. I can soldier on, I can do the work, I understand recreation. But as in building projects, like right now, I've been leading the team with the turf project, and I'm learning that whole process. And I've realized in that process, somebody who's already done that probably could have moved it a little bit quicker than I could at this moment. And so I think the person that we do move into a Recreation Director position or the Recreation Community Service Director position, the one who's in charge, the administrator, must have that, must have that knowledge. It cannot be just somebody we hire, we think, that we think that can do this position. It must be somebody that we know, that has the years' experience. So this way, we can completely streamline this. They can direct us to be basically better employees. And I'm in absolute agreement with you. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Well, so moving forward, oh, there's Jen.
I just, I wanted to speak to the mayor's comment about the needs assessment. And I definitely think that that needs to take place. I think it is a priority. I don't think that we can do it in-house. I think it's something that, unless you hire more staff, then we can do it in-house. However, it's not, it's not, it is a council goal, so it therefore is a priority of staff. We don't have the bandwidth to do it, it's not going to happen. So I do think that, I do think it is one of the first steps in looking towards the overall structure of the department. I agree, you don't want to put the cart before the horse. But I don't think that you're going to get results from a needs assessment that is going to say you don't need to hire a director. And whether you call it a Community Services Director, you call it a Rec Director, you call it a Rec and Community Services Director, I think is somewhat just semantics. I just think, I think that that much is going to be apparent. So I definitely agree with Cindy and the sentiment that we should move quickly, because there is a deficiency, and hire that position. I think that the council, you know, is, knows ultimately what the qualifications and qualities of that role is. And obviously, we have the documents already from our COF study and also, you know, prior to that at the city, that, for tools to help us hire. But then proceeding forward with a community needs assessment, seeing where we are with it, and then hiring appropriately from there. I do agree with Councilmember Cassidy in that I think ultimately, a starting point for the structure of the department should be the director, whatever you're calling Community Services or Rec, the director-level position. And then I do like below that, at a coordinator-level position, Community Services and Recreation, all three of those positions as full-time positions. I think that that's the bare minimum that the city deserves to see at a staffing level.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, Mark.
You know, we've got two examples, two really dedicated, capable people here. I don't understand why we can't raise our own director and then with our over, our high unemployment rate, bring in a couple new Indians, if you would, to work with the new chiefs. Why can't, we've got the talent. Jen, I've seen, for years, I've seen that skill level. So I don't understand why you can't be the director lady.
I appreciate the comment, and so does David. Neither of us should be the director.
And what?
He's saying neither.
But thanks for your, that's a good, thanks for your...
That's where I got it, I'm just always amazed. And I can't understand why we can't get some more people at the lower level.
And then some of the other comments, just to throw them out there, to think further into this, is, I mean, we really should be looking five years down the road, 10 years down the road. What do we want to be when we get to that point? And the only way to really plan forward for that is, you know, put the fire out right now. You know, put people in the positions that can move us forward to the goals that we've set. And then, you know, we have all of this capital improvement projects that are happening, and we are way overtaxing our Capital Improvements and Public Works Director. And while he needs to be very involved in a lot of the projects that we're working on, it would be prudent to have the two directors working together, side by side, relieve some of the pressure from Public Works and Capital Improvements when it comes to Parks and Recreation, Joe Machado Field, rather than completely overtax him and free him up to do some of the other infrastructure, sewer maintenance, and other things that we need to be working on. We all have a goal of working on reclaimed water. We can't even get to that point, because we're overtaxing everyone else. So we're talking about having this director participate in some of the improvements. We've got these park structures, we've got, looking at different ways to utilize the park space that we have now. I mean, we're just stagnant. So we also know, with the director position having been vacant for some time, we also know that the coordinator position is also going to be potentially, Jen's moving to another department. So we're going to need to look at that at the same time. So rather than just put a Band-Aid on hiring Jen's position so that she can move to where she needs to be to help our interim city manager, we should be looking at the bigger picture.
Other council have any comments?
I agree that the needs assessment should be right up on top of the list, because we're designing an elephant, not knowing what the elephant's going to look like.
Before, do you, see, I think we can still go along with the title, Community Services and Recreation, whichever way, because I think that position is needed. And I think, and again, just like when I came, it was a broad description. And with that broad description, recreation program, senior activities, dah 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 dah, and then it all fill in, because the ability, the management, the ability to manage, ability to write grants, ability, whatever, is all similar. I mean, okay, yes, I couldn't lead a little league game, you know, but then we had people that could do that. So I think if we, if we wanted, because we're going to need to start on that sooner than later. I think we could get the title, work up the appropriate, I think it says in here, look at what the class comp, the salary range would be for something like that.
Look at the COF study, because we already have a lot of this information as it is. We have prior job descriptions too. We have job descriptions going back to when we did do more community services. And so, at least to get a basis down and start this process of filling that position simultaneously to doing a needs assessment. Because I can't imagine that, you know, things would be shifting so dramatically that it would be hiring, you know, public works versus recreation. That's not the, that's not the spectrum we're looking at. Like you said, all of these things that we need are the basic things, and then there will be some changes in there. But I think you go into the hiring, the hiring process, knowing that.
We're talking about hiring another full-time employee, is that...
Well, it's a budgeted-for position that's been vacant. So to actually fill in that position.
And also, what you're saying is that the cost-effectiveness could improve because that particular position could actually go out and find more money that could offset the amount of money that is going to be spent on that employee.
Yes.
True, yes?
Yeah, so hypothetically, you have somebody who has prior knowledge and experience participating in grants, right? participating in grants, right? We are, we're just so overtaxed as it is. So let's say the skate park is a great example, so we need to make some great movements in the skate park. This person might have the ability to not only have the avenues to go after additional funding, but then be able to physically go after that, write the grants, participate in that and then see a whole project through, whereas now, we don't, I mean, we have that, but we're just, there's no bandwidth left.
I appreciate your honesty in coming up, Jen, and David, and letting us know that you guys are taxed. Of course, I already know that because I spent a little bit of time in your office and I see all of your hands are working, your eyes, you got people at the counter, you're giving out turkeys, you're telling me about what the new turf field is gonna look like and also explaining to me what the fitness trail's gonna be. I understand, you have a big job and I appreciate you coming forward and letting us know that you could use the expertise and the help. And I also appreciate Mark Malone's comment and that the efficiency of the community is also something we need to look at, but I need to be realistic about this, we are taxed.
You know, I think where the efficiency, the money saved is in the efficiency that this person could bring in, because they, because like Cindy said, we're so bogged down with the day-to-day that goes on in making the programs that we do have continue to run and the events that we do have continue to go on and then we're actually able to add a few things, sprinkle a few things in there with this and some of those few things happen to be pretty big projects. And but with somebody who's in that administrative position, they can have an oversight of everything that we're, that we are doing, give us the directive from council, from the city manager and bring it back to us, much like when Jen, when I worked directly under Jen and she was the director, she would come out and then she would give me directive on things we need to do, we worked really good as a team. But as one person right now, it's nearly impossible to look into the future. And that person who's the, who would be the administrator can always have their foot in the future and constantly be out making, you know, shaking the hands and doing what's necessary to make that future more bright for recreation in this town. Trying to keep up with my thoughts right now. So it's hard to do, like you said, when I'm in that office and I'm in there eight hours, eight hours a day and you can't, you can't get away because you never know how many things are coming in there and at times, you know, the meetings you have to be in and we need somebody in there so I can go out and do the programs, you know, and lay the groundwork for more programs. That person can give me the directive and I can lay out the groundwork for new programs and run those programs. That person can go, help me create those and I can go run those.
To validate what you're saying, I can attest that I have, I've heard a public outcry that we absolutely need more things for the community. We need a facility, we need more places for kids to go, more things for people to do. We need, it's a broad spectrum that I know you're dealing with and I know your shortfalls. Rely on basically the policies that we set up here, so.
I believe I feel the pressure.
Absolutely, there's a lot of pressure on you and the community's feeling a lot of pressure as well because they're coming up and they're expressing, we need this. We don't, it's not that we want it or, it's absolutely necessary to be more effective, more efficient, more open and have more places to go, more open doors as I've heard from my uncle Lolo and Doug Federall, we need open doors so that, we don't need to close any more doors, we need to keep them open and open more of them so that there's more activity, sponsored activity, city-sponsored activity for our community to go to.
Absolutely.
So I think this is a pretty good subject.
Okay, thanks.
I kinda, I kinda like the ideas that are being kicked around. And maybe there's a thought, getting back to Mark on his observation with the rec department, maybe it's possible to find somebody out there that'll come over or maybe we have them in the community or maybe we'll have to go out to mainland and get somebody, maybe to come on two, three days a week that has the skills to do these things and teach our people that we have here, teach them, be their mentor for a while, show them what to do and then carry it on from there. And then as we hire people, people will know what to do within that department. That might be part of our answer, but I like what I'm hearing about everything else in the department and I know they've been under the gun for a long time and they do a lot of hard work, I've seen them do that, so. Just a suggestion, maybe that might be part of our answer, I don't know, but that's just a speculation.
A parks and rec consultant?
Yeah, have them come over two days a week or have her or if we have somebody in the community that could fit that bill, that could do all these things and have the background and the ability to do those things that we're talking about.
Is that something that you think would be recognized in a needs assessment study? Is that something, no?
I don't think so. I don't think that really would lend itself to that. But Jim is standing, but let's let Jim speak.
Stepping back, just a couple of comments to council member Olson's idea that the needs assessment come at the forefront. And I'm gonna already mess up on the term, I leaned over to Jen to ask the name of the firm and I've already forgotten it as I stood here, I'm sorry to say, but there's a firm that, City Fabric, that has already submitted a proposal to do that, you have them already under contract, you're already working with them, I think you might have the opportunity to fast-track that part of the process and keep both trains moving down the track.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, thanks, Jim.
Yeah.
Jim mentioned to me, is that something Kendall Flint's firm could do for us is a community needs assessment, much like they're doing the Mole project assessment? And I said, well, we have actually received a proposal, although we haven't put out a request for proposals, from the firm City Fabric, Brian Neelazewski, who I butchered as just, it's not really how you say his last name, but who's doing our fit trail assessment and is also working with us on Five Corners is, would be, you know, that's right up his firm's alley, which, you know, they're a nonprofit that does community planning and so anyway, there are options or, so anyway, there's that if you're wanting to go out for that.
Okay.
And I just wanted to say, in terms of the comment about having a consultant come over, I, my worry with doing that is we have so many different events and things that happen at different times of the week and weekends and I would love to see somebody onsite, you know, somebody that lives here, that gets to know the community, that's, you know, involved in the community, that knows all the players in the community and that can alter their schedule while being here, like, you know, they're gone on a Monday because they're gonna be working Saturday, Sunday on an event, you know, that type of thing, so I just wanted to add that in.
I think Councilman Hernandez, your point is well-recognized and to validate that I think we gotta have a good staff regardless of who's brought in. They're magnets to new information and they can't, they will not help but improve their skills in case something does happen, but I think that's a valid point that, you know, we need to work with what we have, but if we have a public outcry that is pointing in the direction of an immediate need, we might need to recognize that and I think that our recreation department will benefit from somebody coming in, but I definitely respect your comment on working with what we have and trying to find somebody within the pool of the community, if it's possible, if there's somebody out there, so it's, I just, thank you for that.
One thing, like I noticed, like with finance department, when you guys brought Chris in and you watch how quickly he got in there and he streamlined everything, that now when he, now that when he's lead, everybody in there is very competent. They were competent prior, but they got great training from somebody who knew how to move them in that direction, you know, and now he can leave feeling comfortable with what he does. You know, if that's something that happens in the rec department where somebody comes on, signs on for a two-year contract to streamline us and move us in that direction and in the process, one of us learns the position and then when that person leaves, we can move into that position, I, you know, that's something I think could happen, but I agree with Cindy, I don't think it's a two or three-day thing. I think that person has to be here every day, kinda like how Chris was. He was there, you know, whenever you needed a question, anything, not just, and not just for his department, for all the departments and being able to show exactly how finance affects everything that's going on there. And I think with somebody who does, who lives in that world at this time, can do that within the city as well, be able to unify all that together as well.
We've just complicated this conversation, haven't we? Now we have a parks and rec consultant for a couple of years, which is, I mean, that makes sense kinda too, other than you've got the person going back and forth and I strongly agree with Cindy and as we move forward in other areas, that we want him to live here full-time. What? Like Bob, like the finance, yes, yes.
Who, by the way, is doing a great job as well.
Yes, yeah.
And then also bringing in a director, I'm just gonna keep going with it, also to bring in a director could potentially help us move towards another one of our city goals, which is to develop internship programs for the city. A community services director is gonna have, should have a skill that could help us develop that. There's a need for two to three, maybe even four potential internships in the summertime that the city could really benefit from. Just in the recreation department, there's potential administrative internship programs, there's, you know, the possibility of a harbor internship program, there's so many options out there and this is a great person to task with helping to develop those programs and it gets us to another one of our council goals.
And so with that.
No, that was a good conversation because it gave us a lot more information to base some kind of a movement or a decision.
I guess the decision is, do we wanna move ahead?
Give them direction.
Okay, give them direction to.
So my direction would be, and then I guess council modify us, CFIT, but my direction would be to ask staff to move forward with hiring a full-time community services slash parks and recreation director, pulling all the information that we currently have, pulling job descriptions that we currently have and then to also, at the same time, move forward with getting information from City Fabric as well as possibly RGS as to what it would cost to do a needs assessment and how long that would take us to do and if we could, that would then come back to the council for review. And then the third would be to move forward in hiring a coordinator position so that we could fully allow Jen to move to her new position and without taking away that position from the recreation department.
So let me ask a question, then we are looking, and David, what is your title?
Currently.
Currently, I'm the interim or temporary recreation coordinator.
Okay. And then you are recreation coordinator, so he was interim and you're, okay. And so.
So his, the position that David was hired for was a recreation aid position and, I'm sorry, recreation assistant position and so that potentially would change, one of those potentially would change to coordinator, but I think that would come around after pulling in a director and delineating job descriptions and who does what and after the needs assessment.
So are we also agreeing to a three full-time member department or are we?
Well, that's what it is right now.
It is, but we're just replacing.
Well, no, it's not. It's not a three, three full-times? There's no three full-times in there?
It's a part-time.
Because the director position has been vacant.
Okay, but if it was a director in here and then it was Joe that was part-time, has there been three full-time people in your department ever?
No.
No? Yeah. Right, so.
They've never replaced their director. So there's been three people. It's not even two people, but there's three, they're just filling in, they're not adding, right?
But the new acting director, I mean. Oh, okay. Always.
She was doing the job.
Yeah, right, okay.
In her current, in the capacity as a coordinator, she was doing the job, so.
So then going forward in the future, we're looking at a three full-time department. I just wanna make sure everybody's on board with that. Okay.
Do we have an idea of how the hiring process would work? And obviously we'd want your input from.
Oh, sure. And that's just it, we're directing them to put that together.
We're just trying to get, we're just giving direction, we're just giving a direction and then they'll get back to us, correct?
Yeah. Okay, any other comments? All right.
Denise, do you have any questions? Do you feel, was that pretty clear? Great. Thank you. Thanks, Greg.
And the item number eight.
Item number eight is a discussion on Avalon medical marijuana regulations on cultivation and Scott provided everybody with a memo. And so I'll let Scott take it over from here.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's give a little background here, especially for those in the audience that weren't here at the last meeting. About a year and a half ago, the California Supreme Court determined that a city can have total control over medical marijuana within its boundaries. The city can totally ban it, the city can allow it. Many cities have chosen to disallow it, some cities allow it. With our firm, it's about two-thirds ban it, one-third allow it. Legislature didn't like that and so what the legislature did this last session was it provided a provision that said that unless a city takes affirmative action in terms of, the city directly regulates marijuana, both the dispensary and cultivation, unless the city has a law on the book, state law controls. And here's what the state law says. For dispensaries, state law would say that anywhere that you can sell anything, you can sell marijuana. So if, but you have a ban in place right now and that ban will remain in place unless the council decides to loosen it. We do believe that even after the deadline set by the legislature of March 1st, that if you can loosen it up, that's still gonna be okay. But you have a ban in place. What you do not have in place right now is a regulation on cultivation. And so this agenda item is for you to give the city attorney's office direction on what you want, whether you want to regulate the cultivation of marijuana.
Of medical marijuana.
Medical marijuana. If, if, if you take no action, if you take no action, then March 1st, state law will be in effect. And what state law currently, what state law will allow is it will allow patients with the medical marijuana card to cultivate six mature or 12 immature plants and have eight ounces of processed marijuana without obtaining any license from the state. So people can, are allowed under state law to cultivate marijuana in their home residence without getting any license from the state. That will be the law in Avalon if nothing is done by March 1st, 2016. State law also allows 100 square feet if a caregiver or a cannabis cultivator is licensed. It's 100 square feet of growing area for medical marijuana. That's for a patient or if it's caregiver, it's 500 square feet for five patients with state permission. And then there's a whole other, I think there's eight or nine different types up to a whole nursery that's larger than 22,000 square feet for growing medical marijuana if you're licensed by the state.
Okay.
Okay?
Got it.
You have the ability to decide whether you wanna allow cultivation or not. It's a pure policy issue, it's not a legal issue. It's a pure policy issue. It's not a legal issue. What I'm asking though, is that we have to have an ordinance on the first meeting in February. And then the second meeting will be, the second meeting in February, we'll adopt an ordinance as well as an urgency ordinance to make certain that we have it in effect by March 1st. We don't believe you have to have it in effect, but just to be extra cautious, if you want to regulate it, we'll do it with a regular ordinance and an urgency ordinance. So now it's your turn to decide what you want to do. Again, it's not a legal issue. We've done it both ways. It's pure policy.
Okay.
And I can answer any questions if you'd like.
Okay. Well, would any of the council like to speak before we ask the community?
I have just a couple of questions, of course. Um, I, help me understand, because I think I just misunderstood you. I had thought that what was on the books was no, was regarding dispensaries in general.
You have something on dispensaries, but you have nothing on cultivation, which means that even though after March 31st, there may not be any dispensaries on Avalon. If someone has a medical marijuana card, they can grow the cannabis on their home without getting a license. They can just do it. And you don't have the ability to regulate it if you haven't acted by March 1st. So again, they have to have the card.
Right.
Um, and again, I will, in full disclosure, there is some effort in the state because this law was just passed a couple of months ago. There is some effort in the state to extend the deadline from March 1st because a lot of cities are scrambling to decide what to do. But we have to assume that that is the deadline. And so again, I'm coming to you to give you the option because if I don't, you don't have any control.
So if we, if we do nothing right now, those patients in need of the prescription and would need, would cultivate wouldn't be adversely affected because after March 1st, the state would say that they could cultivate six mature.
Or 12 immature plants.
Immature plants. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
So second to that, I guess, how would it be regulated? And I am hearing that there would be no regulation because it wouldn't be, it wouldn't, they wouldn't have to have a state license. That's where I'm confused.
If you don't take an act, it's not regulated. Up to that amount.
Up to that.
Up to that amount. It's totally unregulated. You don't need a license. They can grow it, period. And you have, there, there's, you, there would not be a violation of city or state law if they, again, had their card and cultivated six mature or 12 immature.
Okay, so we, we, if we do nothing, then it doesn't adversely affect those patients, okay? But it, it's then sounding to me like the only thing, if we were to take any action, the only action would be to disallow it, which doesn't make sense.
You could, well, some cities have chosen to totally ban the cultivation of marijuana. Some cities have said that, you know, we don't like six mature and 12 immature, maybe we'll do less. Maybe we'll give three mature and six immature. Again, you have the ability. It, it's, it's our role to present the options to you. Because if you don't, the state controls it. And, and you, you know, the whole thing with the Supreme Court was that local entities have the ability to exercise local control. And the state said, yes, you can have local control up until March 1st. And after March 1st, it's state control.
I mean, is there like a particular place that you go to get a card and it's like a?
No, you go to, you go to doctors.
Go to Venice Beach.
You can get a card. Do you need a card to cultivate as well? Is there, is there different licenses that you need to get to, one to, to possess and then one to cultivate?
No.
No, no, you just have.
Okay. Per possession, you have to have the medical marijuana card. And to cultivate right now.
Is there a license?
No.
You don't need a license?
No, but what the state is saying is, is that you have until March 1st to ban it. If you don't ban it, you don't need a license within a certain number of plants. And so for instance, in the memo, the city of Live Oak has, has, has banned cultivation. The city of Riverside is banning it. The city of Lake Forest is banning it.
Newport has.
Newport has. The city of Claremont, one of our cities, is, is fully allowing it. It's just a matter of what, what the council chooses.
And they're banning the cultivation of it. Have they, do they, have they also banned all dispensaries?
Those, Riverside, Lake Forest have banned dispensaries and cultivation.
Okay. Time for some public comment?
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity. Like you haven't heard enough already tonight. We talked about cultivation and I would implore you to think bigger than this. The reason we have no dispensaries, the reason there's no medical marijuana on the island is because one Friday it was put into a, a notes package to the council and they got together the next Tuesday and they voted on it. No one talked about it. There was no meeting like this. There were no people interested in talking about it. It was just a wham, obam, slam and done. And the council voted on it, but so carried. I'm just saying that it wasn't an appropriate presentation. In your note package, you'll find a two-letter, a two-page letter from BB&amp;K. And it talks about, oh, if you, if you do cultivate and you grow it, you'll have mold in your house and it can cause fires. There's nothing about the people who use this as medicine. There's nothing about the people who need it. There's nothing about the people because they can't cultivate it would be forced to continue to violate federal laws because unlike Long Beach or unlike Norwalk, when you take medical marijuana that's legal in Long Beach, where you bought it, and you bring it on the boat to come home to Avalon, you violate a federal law because you're not allowed to transport it. There's a zero tolerance. So what I'm suggesting is not just allowing the cultivation, but you have the opportunity now where you're talking about it and you're voting on it and making rules. Go back to that whole thing that was slammed through the first time. Do we need a dispensary? We need two. If we don't have two dispensaries, we've got a monopoly. A monopoly is not good. We need competition. We need to keep the price fair. So I've done some research on it since I saw this on the paper last week, okay? It's not yes or no about cultivation. Yes, it's yes. But more importantly, we need you to go back to the drawing board and give a couple dispensaries to us in town. We need to, people need to have a dispensary. I looked at it and I thought, well, what's the benefit for the city to have the dispensary besides letting its citizens not violate federal law? And I thought, well, it'd be very easy to charge a fee, a transaction fee where, for example, 4% off the top goes to choices or a choices type program. So we can teach kids in school the difference between drug and drug abuse, alcohol and alcohol abuse. Just because they're in school learning about alcohol doesn't make them alcoholics. And we have to teach them, and this city especially, we've got issues. I think it's important to get in early. How do we fund that? We fund that through a, a fee, a, a sales fee that's 4%. We don't call it a tax because taxing it is not legal, by the way. So. How about another 4% for parks and recreation? You need to pop up an extra $100,000 somewhere to fund three or four new intern positions, full-time, year-round. Boom, 4% sales fee. And how about something for the city? Because there is an issue, you got it, there's some, you gotta think about it, you gotta vote on it, you gotta, it's in topic. So another 4% there. So 12% off the top of these sales would drop a lot of extra money into the budgets of the choices type program, the parks and recreation program, and into the general fund. There are hundreds of people in Avalon, there are hundreds of people on Catalina Island that have medical marijuana cards that permit them to consume in their house their medicine. That's a fact. And we're forcing them to violate federal laws every time they come across. I see the coast guard with their dogs on the boat when I come across occasionally. I've even seen dogs on this side of the island when people are coming off the boat. Let's not have our own citizens arrested for violating federal law because this is their medicine. That's insane. I've talked to a couple of people in the medical marijuana business. If we cultivated, if we allowed to cultivate, just the state limit, that's all you're allowed to do, each household on this island could generate somewhere in the $500 to $1,000 a month of extra income by providing the growth, the medicine, to the local co-op dispensary. As the city attorneys pointed out, there is the opportunity, some people maybe don't have space, but they would have the, the medical card and somebody else could actually help them grow their stuff. But I've talked to these people who are professionals and they say they would come here and they would teach us how to do it. So we're not dependent on cartels and we're not breaking federal laws. And you can grow organic, locally grown, medical marijuana medicine. And this will all be accomplished without using any fresh water, without using any pesticides, without using any kind of fertilizers. It's what they do in the industry and this would just be done on a small basis so that every household could have an extra $500 a month of income. Now you gotta remember about the economics. If you spend $100 on medicine in Torrance, that $100 pays for that guy's house in Palos Verdes and his gardener and blah, blah. If you spend $100 in Avalon, that creates what they call bud tenders, the people who trim it and grow it. It takes care of the people who grow it themselves for some level of compensation, remuneration. It takes care of the sales agents. Immediately, two dispensaries would make another 25 jobs in this town. This is a town that needs jobs. Here we talk about two dispensaries are gonna make 25 new jobs and hundreds of thousands of dollars for the city benefit. Therefore, I ask that you not only decide that cultivation is the right way to go, but that you go back and revisit that last little push that came from BB&amp;K that said, here's a good way to ban it. That was the wrong call at the time. It's time to correct it. You're in the chair now. You can do it. I think it's the right thing to do and I'm available for any questions you might have about it. I've been researching. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mark. Other comments?
Yolanda Montano, 20 Canyon Terrace. Um, I just want to let you know, speaking from experience, I'm a cancer survivor of 23 years now. I lived at the City of Hope for two years and spending $200 a pill to help the nauseate and to be able to eat did not work. The only thing that worked was medical marijuana. At that time, it wasn't even thought of being okay. So we asked our doctor if it was okay for me to do it, to smoke marijuana because we heard that it, it does help. And we didn't know if there was any interact, uh, interactions with the medicine that I was taking in the chemotherapy. He said, no, it actually works, but I didn't tell you that. And if you're gonna use it, please don't get it in an alley or on the street. Get it from someone that you know is just pure medic, I don't, I don't know the difference or whatever. But, so. That being said, I smoked it. It worked. I ate. I was 80 pounds at the time. It was the only thing that kept food in my system. 23 years later, I don't smoke marijuana. So, um, I really don't think that, I think we should help our sick people that are here because it actually does work. And I hope you guys can make a good decision. Thanks.
Thank you for sharing that story.
I wanted to just make a couple of clarifications. I just moved here from the green, green belt of California. And as a school principal, it was in my face every day. I am a strong proponent of medical marijuana for illness. I have watched it. I have watched how it has helped people. But I do want to say, there's a couple of, I, I have to disagree with you. If you have a medical marijuana card and you can, you can transport to our island, you cannot transport across state lines. That is a federal offense, for sure. And then there's two kinds of growers. You can be a medical marijuana grower, but you have to apply for a license for that and you pay a tax for that. Each plant is taxed $1,000. And that is a huge source of revenue. It helps to facilitate, you know, policing, et cetera, watching, watching grows. But for cultivation here on the island, for people that have a medical marijuana card, it's, I mean, you know, that's, the decision is up to you guys. But I did want to clarify that about transporting, if you have a card from the mainland to the island, as, as far as I know, should not be. Well, I don't know. Across state lines, yes? I don't know. I, I asked Captain Federal and he said no. So, just saying.
Okay.
Let's hear from Doug.
Yes. Thank you for coming.
Doug Federal, Captain Avalon Sheriff's Station. We've stopped a lot of people that have come over from the mainland off the Cat Express with marijuana. We've discussed it with the district attorney's office. It is not a federal offense to transport personal quantities of marijuana over here to the island. Uh, we usually cite them out. If they have a medical marijuana card, a valid state card, uh, they, it's, it's legal. We've been told by the district attorney's office they can bring marijuana over here. Large quantities is something different. The quantity has to be reasonably consistent with their medical condition. Person comes over here for a weekend, they have a gram a day, recommendation from a doctor and they come over here with several ounces, that's not reasonably consistent with the recommendation from the doctor. Prior to coming here today, I, I called the sheriff, spoke with the sheriff. I wanted to get his opinions and viewpoints on, on the topic. And I'll share some things with you from our conversation. And in 1996, the voters of California passed Proposition 215, also known as the Compassionate Use Act. The act allowed physicians to recommend the use of medical marijuana to qualified patients. In 2003, the intention of the act was clarified by Senate Bill 420. In summary, the Compassionate Use Act and SB 420 exempt patients, caregivers and recommending physicians from certain provisions of state law that would otherwise prohibit the possession and use of marijuana. Regarding cultivation, a qualified patient or primary caregiver may possess no more than six mature plants or 12 immature plants. The sheriff's department job is not to make laws, but to enforce the laws. As such, the sheriff and I are in support of the Compassionate Use Act as it was intended and originally written. However, any variation from what the city decides or what exceeds the Compassionate Use Act will be enforced. My personal concerns are for the children in the community who may have greater access to marijuana, who may enter into houses or sheds where they believe marijuana is being grown. If marijuana is more prevalent, children may wrongly believe that marijuana is not harmful to them or believe that since adults are growing marijuana and smoking it, it's okay for them to smoke it. Again, these are my concerns and they're based on my passion for the safety and welfare of the children in Avalon. Regarding medical marijuana dispensaries, we in law enforcement believe they adversely affect crime and the quality of life issues. We all have opinions on marijuana laws. I think you need to put personal feelings aside, do what's best for the whole community and know that we, the sheriff's department, will support your decision.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I want to make the point that we are a tourist community and I've worked in a number of jobs in the customer service and I'm frequently asked why we don't have a dispensary. Something to keep in mind, although it's pragmatic and number-serving, is, is that it's a service that we don't provide people. This is a tourist community. We completely make our money from tourism. So it's just one more thing that we don't have here on the island to sell to people, to give to people. And I just, just right now, you were totally right. We've been operating under the, the illusion that it's illegal to bring marijuana on the boat. So having it available. So it, having it available on the island is one more way to attract people and keep people here on the island. And that is something to consider because this is a tourist community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else wanna say anything?
So it, it sounds to me like there needs to be education and awareness as to how we go about bringing a new ordinance into town if that's the direction we went into. And it's key because my biggest concern is, is in line with Doug's, which is to keep it away from children. And absolutely, um, and I'd say it's, it should be like alcohol, twenty, twenty-one years of age. Unless, that is, of course, there's a lot of children that actually are administered droplets, um, because it's a measurable amount. And kids with autism, cancers, seizures, these, these are, these are points that have been brought to me by the public. I'll cry because what are people doing now? It's a dirty little secret? Because a lot of people do it and, and they do it because they need it. It's affordable and it's effective. This is what I've been told. Yes, there's a lot of different aspects of how we need to approach this, but there is an infinite amount of things that, that medical marijuana can cure. Dispensaries would actually bring a little more clarity to, to how this is brought into a community because the education comes along with it and the science comes along with it. This is heavily tested. Now, it's not how it used to be, like Yoli said, it's just in the bag. No, there's different ways you can administer it and at different levels. There's, from what I understand, being told, there's hundreds of different types of applications, strengths. They've learned to, in, in, in laboratories, how to, how to manufacture it to where it is not, um, psycho, not a psychoactive form. Now, if you have a certain, um, um, illness that, that requires a psychoactive form of it, you can attain that. But it's definitely a way that you measure how it's dispensed. I'm not in, into having people walking around smoking, smoking pot everywhere in town. I, I don't think that's a good idea. I do believe that, that the law has to be, has to be administered as it is, which is if you can, and, and maybe you can smoke where you can smoke a cigarette. I think that would be an unpopular thing to do and I don't think many people would actually do that. There's no need for it, like I said, uh, for recreation and for leisure. I, I, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about for the medical use. Um, dispensaries bring education, they bring enlightenment, they bring, um, a certain amount of normality to it because a drug is a drug until it's properly prescribed by a physician. And, and some medical marijuana cards can be picked up by somebody on, on the boardwalk in Venice and some are actually given to people who have legitimate illnesses. My concern is there's a lot of people in this town, young and old, that have illnesses that need to be recognized. There's a way we have to do, I, I, I believe there's a way that we need to do this, um, in order to, um, manage it, understand it, educate ourselves, and so it's not something that, and, and educate our children. Bring the education into the classrooms, let them know. Also, I might, I have concerns about if, if this law comes in, we need to recognize if people are growing weed in their backyards for medical marijuana use, yeah, people can come in and get it. People who get off the boat, Natalie, you made a good point, they might want it. And you know where they're gonna go? If they, they're gonna go in somebody's backyard if they actually need it. So we need to understand what is gonna be happening if, if, when, when this happens.
One thing that we can consider that I know a number of cities in northern San Diego County have done and in Orange County, um, is dispensaries per se, they're not places that you can go into. They're not like, like you can't, and I think in Long Beach, this is the case too, they deliver. So it doesn't have to be like in regards to talking about the children, some, someplace where like you can just see people going into, adults going into and acting differently than they normally act, like the way you would in a bar. It could be something that's discreetly delivered to hotel rooms or, you know, people can call and go pick it up where it's not like a, a space people are going and like hanging out for a protracted amount of time. It's being delivered, it's being picked up, it's discreet, it's more discreet than that. So there's different ways to administer it, like you mentioned, so that can, uh, can, um, handle at least part of the where are they gonna smoke it problem. And, and different ways of, um, delivering it can handle like, like the, how obvious it is. I mean, if it's, if it's, if we had a dispensary in the city, but it wasn't necessarily a place that people went into, um, maybe they, you know, that you, there's places where you can upload your license, you can upload your driver's license, they have a, a process of verifying that and then they deliver the product to the person. That takes a lot of that out, that takes a, one piece of that of just kid, like the kid part out of that because they don't know it's in a brown bag, if it's vacuum sealed. No one really knows what you're doing or what it is. So that's another way that we can have a dispense, more than one dispensary in the city competitively without them being, like, like public spaces you could go into. Do you see what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
Personally, I'm not ready to tackle the dispensary thing this evening, so we can move along on that. But we're giving, giving us a lot of good information for future. Thank you very much. So let's get back with the issue that we have right at hand. Cause it is a fascinating subject. And I guess I have one question. No doubt, medical, I mean marijuana will be put on the ballot in November.
Medical? Yeah, there's a, actually, no.
No, recreational.
Recreational marijuana.
And, and if recreational comes on, that just throws all this out the window because everybody'd be able to smoke it, grow it and whatever.
Uh, I think what the statute will do is it was, we will set limits on, on the recreational use of marijuana so that, you know, you can't hit like kilos or something like that. But, you know, it, it's gonna, it, it will still put limits on it.
If you can ban it, you should be able to, um, limit it, correct? No, oh, no.
No, I think, no. If, if, what will happen, I believe, is the proposed state law, is the state law will preempt local regulations. In other words, what that means is, is that cities lose local control if it is, if the state law passes and that you cannot ban it. It's, it's, it's the state, in terms of, just like for instance, um, the plastic ban, uh, plastic bad ban that we talked about. If the state law passes, whatever cities do is thrown out and state law governs. So, but, but, you know, there's a chance that, you know, the recreational use of marijuana will be legal if the ballot measure passes.
Well, I'd hate to think that we turned a blind eye to the, to the fact that is, is the eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the room is here and we need to do something about it. And that is for the protection of our community, for the health and well-being of our community and the protection of our kids and, and the people who absolutely need the medication. It's, we need, we need to get away from, I, I, from, from what, the outpour, outpouring that, that has been, um, benounced on me, it's something that needs to be recognized and we need to go ahead with getting caught up with what a lot of the rest of the world is doing. It's in a unique little community, so there's a lot of good information that has been given to us by the public. And, um, I think we need to consider those things and many, many more things and keep working with the public and, um, you know, keep, keep Doug informed, um, on, and, and maybe use him as, as somebody that, that gives us a little bit of input as to what it means to him and, cause we don't wanna overtax our law enforcement because they already have a hard enough job as it is. So, um, going into the future, I, I'm just hoping that people keep an open mind about this and, and that's what, um, I have been directed by my constituents, most of them, who've come up to me about this particular subject, so that's where I'm at.
So Scott, let me just ask, um, this legislation coming in March is based on the Senate Bill Four Twenty?
Yeah.
Correct?
Yes. It's, it's already passed. Governor signed it.
Oh, it goes, just goes into effect.
Yeah, it goes into effect. Yeah, so they, I think they gave you...
So the consideration is obviously the compassionate use?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll start it. Let me just start it out. I, and Doug and I talked about the other, I, I'm, I'm very concerned with the, with the overutilization. I know it can be misused. However, I do know with a lot of my friends and whatever and the stories that Yoli tells, it is very important for people to have that. So I'll just start it out. Also, we have very small places here. I know that, that pot is extremely pungent. So if you're growing it outside, you can smell it everywhere. And I'm hoping that wouldn't bring people to all of a sudden wanna rip off somebody's medical marijuana. I don't know that we can regulate that it be grown inside because that presents its own problems, you know, with lamps and water and all of that stuff. But, so I would like to maybe recommend, in line with the compassionate use, is that we just minimize the number of plants that they can use, that they can grow. And I would start with they could have three mature and some other number of, of baby plants.
State laws are...
What?
Recommendations are or, six or, six, six mature or twelve immature.
I thought it was six or twelve and six, but twelve in the behind, in the behind.
Immature?
Yeah, well, I mean, it, it... It's six mature or twelve immature. So basically...
So they all mature at the same time?
They all mature, then you gotta kill them.
Ooh!
Then, then, then actually what you do is you harvest the ones that are mature, you, 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 you take as many of the, uh, the leaves off of them. And so it's, it's a rotating thing.
Okay, cause yeah. There's just something that hasn't been mentioned, um, and we are talking about medical marijuana. You can always, Joe, you touched on it lightly, dispense by drops. I personally don't approve of chemicky treating and separating it out and this is a non-psycho pathic and whatever. I don't like somebody screwing with the weed or like it straight out of the ground. But for instance, when my mom was dying, at the point when, um, while she still could swallow, you know, picking it fresh and putting it in something to eat is the easiest way to get it in you and the gentlest way for it to affect you. She had no appetite at all and we came to the point where there was no way for her to swallow. I'm just saying that if you have any kinda COPD or whatever, you're not gonna smoke it. And to take, see, I, I don't trust dispensaries myself. Don't trust them. Don't trust you, what you put on my weed. Okay. So, I mean, I, if you, but I'm saying as far as health reasons, compassion, I remember when Yoli was sick. I mean, we've all put somebody somewhere. Radiation, chemo, you're hurling, it'll stop you from hurling, you know? It will. I mean, my mom had a pleasant exit because of weed and I'm not, and I could name other names, we all could. But I'm just saying is that we're not mentioning eating it. You know, a lot of times, you know, cook it, bake it, eat it, make it softer, especially if someone's got throat cancer, something like that. It's hard to swallow. You, you definitely can't smoke it because you can't cough when you have throat cancer. So as far as the, you're not gonna, I don't care what you say, five hundred a month, shut it. It's a six plants and besides, if you grow it outside and it's pungent, I know the deer in my yard are gonna eat it. You already don't stand a chance. Can I tell you some stories from the seventies? Remember, where's my weed? Okay. You know, I mean, and here's the deer. What? Okay, so like you really can't spread it out. It's not gonna, it's not gonna be there. We have a natural, um, at the moment, we have a natural thing that, that will eat that. But consider that it's ingested, that it's in its natural state, the cleanest, you just, you grew it yourself. You know nobody sprayed it with anything and you can eat it. So that's all I'm saying. Thank you, David. Other comments? Cause it's interesting. Okay, well, I'll start again. I'll make a motion that we, we allow it, but we reduce the number of plants. And I, again, I don't know what that number would be, I'm just, if it's, okay, if it's, if, if you have three mature plants, you gotta figure that you gotta start it in a little, you gotta start a little one somewhere. So how do you do that? How do you just say three mature plants when sometimes you're gonna have little babies there?
I'm just saying, usually, a, a, a mature, well-cultivated plant represents a pound of pot. That's a lot of pot. So, you know, three pounds, so I, I don't know if you're saying three or six or whatever. I mean, if you're looking for a sort of framework of what one plant represents. Okay.
But how long does it take for a pot plant to get to fruition, come to fruition?
Oh, it's, I, it could be six months. Six months, depending on the sun and just...
Yeah, so I guess, so, so three pounds might sound like a lot, but if you can only get it every, I mean, that's what I...
If you're doing an indoor grow, then you can probably do, you know, you can probably get four, four cycles a year. But if you're doing an outdoor grow, it all depends on what nature's gonna do. So, just like any, any other plant, it's probably two plants a year.
Okay, I couldn't grow a tomato plant this year, so...
No, I couldn't grow anything.
So never mind, if I needed it, I would be dead. So...
Patients can't always grow the medicine though. And you can grow a plant three feet tall and you can grow one fifteen feet tall.
Yeah, what's mature? What is, what's the definition of mature? When the, here it comes. Okay. Where the buds?
I, I heard the answer, when it starts budding.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. Okay, there's a weak motion on the table for, um...
If we, if we could wake Councilmember Cassidy, Heather.
Okay.
So if, what, what if we do this, then we, we ignore everything else on here? Cause there's dispensing arm and there's a growing arm. Is that, we're...
Right now, we're not dealing with the dispensing arm at all. That's not a part of this for discussion tonight, was it?
You could, you could give, okay, for the dispensing part, again, we could have a study session on that. Your law, right now, bans all dispensing. Even after the state law goes into effect, because you've got a complete ban, you can always ratchet it down. There's no time limit for you, as we understand the state law, to ease up on your regulations. You, you can always allow dispensaries at a later date. There's not that, there's not that urgency because you already have something on the books. But if you wanna, you know, direct us to come back with the entire history of what the city did, because there were multiple council meetings where medical marijuana was discussed. Not a Friday evening snuck it in. This was directed by council, it was studied for several months. And so we just need to, we can come back with a correct history of what happened.
Okay, and we also need to recognize there's, there's a lot of different facets of, of this and we've touched on some of them. There's growers, there's distributorships, there's laboratories that actually, um, monitor exactly potencies and brands and types and, and, um, and there's delivery systems as well. These things are things that we need...
To look into in the future?
Hold it over and do a little more research.
Again, the, the, the deadline is this, I need direction so that I can bring an ordinance to you the first meeting in February, cause you gotta have two meetings of an ordinance to make it. And you're only having, I think, one meeting in, I don't know.
Meeting in January so far, yes.
Yeah.
Second meeting.
So, so at that second meeting, so it's the, it's the third Tuesday in January, you need to provide us final direction so that we can bring an ordinance to you the first meeting in February.
Okay, well, once we know, what's that?
I thought you just did that. Started the direction.
Yeah, she did.
Starting ordinance of...
Yeah, but, but my question is, so then we read the ordinance and now the, next time, the people are gonna be out more than they are today, I imagine. Once this, you know, we're gonna have the pros and the cons coming out next council meeting, cause I think this is kinda new to some. meeting, because I think this is kind of new to some. And then, all of a sudden, let's say, oh, and then we change our mind. Now we're back to rewriting another ordinance and doing a couple more readings?
Well, again, you have to have two readings before March 1st.
I know. But, but again, if we, if after the first reading, because the people can comment-
Right.
And then we go, oh, yeah, whoops. Okay, and we decide to change our mind, then we gotta try to change it and do two more readings of this new ordinance.
Correct.
Okay.
You'll miss the March 1st deadline.
And then if you miss the March 1st deadline, cultivation is locked.
But the one thing I know is that we have, we have a schedule that Denise helped us develop, when if, at least for once a month, if we needed a special meeting, we have that laid out.
But you cannot adopt an ordinance at a special meeting.
Okidoki.
Okay. It's one of the state, I'm sorry, it's one of the state laws.
Okay.
It's gotta be adopted at a regular meeting.
Okay.
So, so again, you're looking at, the adoption is going to be the second meeting in, the second meeting in February. You can introduce an ordinance at a special meeting. So let's say that you have the first reading-
Oh, okay.
-in January, or the first meeting, reading in February. You could have, and, and the public comes and you, and you want to change it. The rule is you can redo the ordinance and introduce it at a special meeting as long as, here's the legal part again, there are five days between the special meeting and the adoption.
Okay.
That clears it up.
I'm just giving you the, giving you what, you know?
Okay, I'm, I'm grasping at the number of, of plants, totally. I don't know if anybody has, I mean, if I could say three, and then I don't know how you decide with the, that the mature, I mean, you gotta have a baby, but-
Three, yeah, three.
Okay. Let's just go with that.
Mayor Marshall.
Six or six little ones. That's half the statement.
Okay. Thank you. That's three mature or six immature plants. That's the motion.
And how many, hang on, and eight ounces of, wait a minute, eight ounces of processed? Keep that the same?
Probably, yes.
Okay. All right.
What about dispensaries?
No, not tonight.
Yes, dispensaries as well.
We're not discussing, that's a big discussion, that'll be a big discussion.
Okay, okay.
Because this is on deadline, we're on deadline on this one.
Okay, I understand.
Okay. Anyway-
I, I hate to limit to that.
Just going to say that you can continue this discussion on the December 15th meeting if you're trying to decide numbers and stuff, so you're not feeling, I've got to give you an answer this evening. This was an item of discussion, yes, we want direction. We do know our goals for February now, but you sound like you still want to fine-tune some of these issues.
I, I could, I could bring back, we could actually, if that's the council's direction, I could bring it back at the next meeting for the first reading. You can look at it.
Okay.
The public can comment. Then the second reading would be in January, and that way you wouldn't have to do it as an urgency ordinance because it's going to be 30 days before. And if there is sufficient public comment generated, you can still fiddle with it in January, and then have the second reading in February.
Excellent. Thank you.
So it's easy enough to do the three and six.
Three plants is what we're saying?
Three mature.
Or six little ones.
That's, that's good.
That was just the start, and then-
That was starting the dispensary, deciding later, I mean, that's a-
We're not discussing the dispensary now. That'll come back at a later, later time.
We can vote tonight on the three and six routine.
Yes. They give direction, and then we come back with an ordinance, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Awesome, thank you, City Council.
You're welcome.
Actually, we're not voting for direction.
But we're holding over-
We appreciate your enthusiasm.
We're holding over discussion, though, to do some additional research on-
Well, you tell me. I thought the, the mayor's motion is, is to bring an ordinance-
So you're going to draft it, and then we can-
At three and six, and then I'll bring that.
There you go.
I'll, I'll bring that, I'll, you know, I'll send an email now to my marijuana team to have them cook up an ordinance.
Probably at the dispensary.
Okay, so, so now we've turned it into a motion you just said.
Well, we just gave direction.
Gave direction.
On those numbers. Okay. Excellent. Okay.
Is that, is, do I have three for the direction, though? I want to make certain.
Three and six, I thought it was.
No, direction, that's not clear.
No, for direction, I want, at least, is there consensus of the council, three people?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm counting at least three.
Yes. Okay. I'm sorry?
No, they're just giving direction right now, and then I gotta come, they're just giving me direction, and then the next meeting, they actually have to vote on it.
Who is this person who didn't introduce herself?
Okay, all good.
Which they're not, they don't legally have to.
Introduce themselves? Huh? Introduce themselves?
They don't have to legally introduce themselves when they come up to them.
No, they do not.
We cannot require them.
We cannot, yeah.
No, we cannot require them.
Okay.
Okay, now we'll be going into closed session.
Wait, wait, wait.
I'm sorry.
Wait, hang on.
Or you have to announce closed session.
No, yes, but I need to, can I take a one-minute break to talk with Councilmember Cassidy?
Only one. Okay, are we, wait.
Okay, so, um-
I don't know if we're-
Chambers, can we have it quiet, please, so we can move forward?
Natalie, are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you.
Um, so my request would be to bring back item number one from closed session for further discussion and potential change of direction.
Item number one.
As we go into closed session.
If that's, if that's what we can do, let's, we'll do that.
As long as, okay. So then we're going to have actually four closed sessions. First closed session will be public employee discipline dismissal release. The second will be public employee appointment, city manager, conference with legal negotiators on the interim city manager and city manager position. Number three, public employee performance evaluation, that's evaluating the interim city manager after two weeks. Conference with real property negotiators regarding the casino dock cafe.
Thank you. We will, we shall be gone awhile. And we are black from closed session.
Sit down, please.
No report of action.
Thank you very much, and good night, Tony.
Good night, Tony.